That's pretty effective. I like that.
Good evening, everybody. At this time, I'd like to call in to open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on June 12th, 2018 at 7:16 PM. Thank you for being with us, and we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Melody Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if, at this time, you'd please silence all cell phones or any electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. So, first on our agenda this evening is appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for principal for Bowie High School and principal for Hill Elementary.
Very good. Ms. Mays?
I move that we approve the administrative appointments that we discussed tonight in closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Mays, a second by Mr. Hibbs to approve the administrative appointments, discussed and closed. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Congratulations. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to introduce the principal for Bowie High School, Mr. Rennie Lizardo. Rennie received his Bachelor of Science from Southwestern Adventist University in Communication, Southwestern Adventist University, for Master of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the principal of Carter Junior High, has been an assistant principal at Bowie, an assistant principal at Bailey Junior High, a lead teacher at Bowles, a lead teacher in middle school as well, and has worked as a lead teacher in South Korea. Rennie, congratulations.
President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, board members, thank you so much for this opportunity. You know, last time I was appointed, four years ago, at Carter, I had one, Eli. He was three at the time. Carter kept me busy, but obviously not busy enough since I have -- [laughter] Second one back there crying. And my wife is pregnant with number three, so... [laughter] Hopefully Bowie will keep me incredibly busy. I wanted to first off, thank -- no, you're right, we're done at this point, right? No more kids. So, I obviously wanted to thank God for helping me get here through Him, all things are possible. Wanted to thank my parents who are watching from Florida, my brother who's watching from the SS Roosevelt, who is in the Sea of Japan right now, he's a battalion surgeon, and I wanted to thank him, obviously, for his support. Obviously want to thank my wife, because without her, I couldn't be here. Everything I do, I am empowered through her. I obviously wanted to thank this district, Ms. Brown, Ms. Hollinger, for giving me the chance, all the principals, I can name so many principals that've helped me get here. This district refuses to let me fail. Every time I feel like I'm messing up, I'm just surrounded by people to pick me back up. On that note, I really want to thank Dr. Cavassos, Mr. Hill, Mr. Wertz, Scott Cale, and the other areas for an embarrassing interview that they helped me get through, and refusing to let me fail. Now, for my Carter family, four years, they've helped me develop into the principal that is now ready to lead Bowie High School. I have learned the value of family from Carter, and understanding that without a strong family, nothing is accomplished. I know that in my personal life and in my work life. So, just thank you so much to Carter. I'm indebted to them, the staff, the faculty, the students. They have really helped me get to this point, and I'll always be there for them. But my heart is now currently at Bowie, and I'm looking forward to this opportunity. We will grow, we will exceed, and like the district does not let me fail, I will not let Bowie fail. We will become a magazine school and continue to grow every day. Thank you guys for your opportunities.
Next, I'd like to introduce the principal for Hill Elementary, Ms. Casey Longoria. Casey received her Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies from the University of North Texas in Denton, her Master of Ed in Ed Leadership from Dallas Baptist University. Most recently, the interim principal at Hill Elementary, has served as an interim associate principal at Hill, an assistant principal at Wood, has been an assistant principal and a principal fellow in Dallas ISD, and has taught 3rd and 4th grade in Wiley ISD. Casey, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. It's an honor and privilege to be here in front of you today and to accept this position. First, just want to thank God, he's been with me this whole entire school year, every step of the way, and I've seen his favor and his goodness and his kindness, so I want to thank him first. And my husband is here tonight, Jacob, and he is super supportive of me and my long hours that I work, and so I'm very thankful and grateful for his support. Also want to thank some mentors, and that actually both happened to be here tonight, sitting by each other. So, my first mentor I ever had out of the classroom was Ms. Ina Myers, and she was my mentor in Dallas ISD when I was a fellow. So, I want to thank her for her wisdom she shared with me when I was at her school, and she was an advocate for kids, and I've always remembered that, all kids deserve it, and she's taught me that. Next, Mr. David Dillard, he's my principal at Wood Elementary. We made a really great team together, and he is kind, he listens well, and he's a servant leader, and he's taught me those skills as well, so I'm very thankful for him, I'm going to miss having him as a team, but I know I'll have him as a friend. Want to thank Dr. Chrissy Buell. She saw something in me in October, when she asked me to go help out at Hill Elementary, and it's led me to where I am today. So, she truly has a gift of seeing the strengths in people, and she's a visionary, and I couldn't imagine working for anybody else. I want to thank my Wood family, my teachers there, and they helped encourage me when I came back into administration from another district that gave me joy and hope again, and I'll always give them that gratitude. And last but not least, my Hill family now, they are some of the most supportive and loving teachers and community members that I've ever met in my life. I couldn't have gotten through this last month without their unconditional support and love, and I really look forward to continuing to spread joy in loving our kids and our community, because every kid deserves it. So, again, thank you so much for this opportunity. It's not unbeknownst to me or lost on me how blessed I am in this short journey I've had in Arlington, so thank you so much.
Congratulations to you both. It was our pleasure, at least mine personally, to be able to cast that vote in support of two great leaders in our district. Both schools are all the better for it, so... And, Rennie, with your request of Bowie keeping you busy, I think it's going to happen. [laughter] But you might have some discussions with your wife. And I couldn't tell if the... Your child out there was speaking in support or against, so we'll just see what time plays out on that one. We'd like to take a brief recess right now, as is our custom. If you both would please mind following Mr. Cale out to the lobby for a brief reception, and if the audience would please indulge the board, allow us to go first so that we can get back in here and get to business. I would appreciate that. It's 7:26 now, we will reconvene at about 7:40. Thank you. Boy, what are you, teachers? You just quiet, just like that?
It's summer, I can't believe it.
That's great. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. So, before we get to why you all are here, we do have actually two public hearings next on our agenda that we will go through. The... Let's see. The first one is the Optional Flex School Day Program for 2017-2018. So, now I will officially open our public hearing on that Optional Flexible School Day Program, 2017-2018. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to introduce Wendy Carrington, our Coordinator of Dropout Prevention, to lead us through this open hearing. So, Wendy, welcome.
Dr. Cavassos, President Rice, School Board. During the 2017-2018 school year, 371 students were enrolled as flexible attendance students at 600 New York, completing 1,407 classes. Eighteen additional students remained on their home campus for instruction. A total of 389 students participated in OFSDP. This year, 126 of those students have graduated so far. 147 students are still currently enrolled at either the dropout prevention center or their home campus. Six students have left AISD to attend other schools in other districts. 99 students have dropped out. Those students are among the most vulnerable students in the district and include 11 students who have completed all coursework but have not passed state mandated tests. Also, during the 2017-2018 school year, 102 students were enrolled as flexible attendance students at Arlington Collegiate High School, participating in OFSDP. All of these students graduated in May of 2018. They were able to participate in a variety of college courses offered during traditional school hours as well as non-traditional hours. OFSDP allowed students to participate in non-traditional course times that included evening classes, Saturday classes, and online classes. Students had the flexibility to take courses at ACHS, the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center, multiple Tarrant County College campuses, and the University of Texas at Arlington. This flexibility helped all students to acquire their high school diplomas, as well as allowing 85% of the class of 2018 to acquire an associate's degree.
Great information. Thank you. I don't see any cards for comments from the audience, is that correct, Ms. Benjamin?
No, correct, no comments.
Okay. So, since we have no comments from the audience, then the public hearing on the Optional Flexible School Day Program, 2017-2018, is now closed, and we will move on to the next public hearing that I will open on the Optional Flexible School Day Program for 2018-2019.
Thank you, President Rice. Welcome back, Wendy Carrington. [laughter] She's been gone for a while, so now here she is again. For the next public hearing.
OFSDP may be implemented for students in grades nine through 12, who are at risk of dropping out of school, participating in an approved early college high school plan, attending a state-approved innovative redesign school, and/or require an alternate academic route due to denial of credit, and one or more classes because of not meeting state attendance requirements. For the upcoming year, we will continue to rely on this program for our district's dropout prevention program housed at 600 New York, and our early college high school students as well. In doing so, the OFSDP will grant students in these transformational programs access to a flexible schedule beyond that of a traditional 180-day, five-day-per-week requirement, including courses on weekends, night classes, extended-day classes, and flexible schedules throughout the year to accommodate courses beyond the traditional 18-week semester. Under the OFSDP designation, the school district may receive funding based on the actual time a student is in attendance, from as low as 45 minutes a day to a maximum of 10 hours a day. Minutes are accumulated to maximize the average daily attendance a student can earn during the 12-month period. Students must apply to participate, they must meet eligibility requirements, and be afforded certified instructors in all educational services for which they are eligible, as well as comply with appropriate assessments during the regularly scheduled assessment period.
Thank you very much for that information. Let's see, there are no comments from the audience, so the public hearing on Optional Flexible School Day Program, 2018-19, is now closed. And thank you, Ms. Carrington. Yes, applause. And those... Having that opportunity in our district is so important and benefits so many students. Yes, there were some stats that made us all sigh, but the overwhelming positive that's realized is just amazing. So, thank you, Wendy, thank you to everybody at 600 New York and all the work that you do, and I know Dr. Boland isn't here, but for the Collegiate High School as well, it's wonderful stuff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, now we come to our Open Forum for Agenda Items, and this... I do have a card. "This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It's not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum." I do have one card. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there's one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on, time's up. And you will be... You should be ending your presentation at that time. So, I know this is not your first rodeo, Mr. Stephen Poole, come on down. Representing UEA, discussion subject is the 2018-19 budget.
Dr. Rice, definitely not my first rodeo. I will actually be completing my 18th year with UEA this July, so... Members of the board, Dr. Rice and Dr. Cavassos, I know you're working really hard on next year's budget, and a big portion of that is the compensation piece. Jeffrey Harris, at your last meeting last week, shared what some surrounding school districts are doing. I have two updates for you. Fort Worth ISD is finishing their budget, and they're including a 2% raise for all employees with a starting teacher salary of $53,000. And just at the end of May, HEB ISD adopted a 2.5% increase for all employees with, believe it or not, a starting teacher salary of $55,500. Pretty amazing to think that's what a starting teacher makes. Bet you a lot of teachers here didn't make that when they started their career. At your seat, I laid a sheet down to talk about TRS, Active Care Health Insurance premiums. I've stopped talking about what monthly costs are and started using annual figures, and that's what I provided you. For the 18-19 school year, an individual who takes the lowest plan, the highest deductible plan, will pay $4,404 a year in health insurance premiums. If they want to cover their family, it's $16,488. For the TRS Active Care II, which our state has now shut off to any new entrance into the plan, an individual will pay $9,384, and their family will pay $26,328 every year in health insurance premium. Now, that's total premium. You pay, for your professional staff, $2,820 of that, and for your support personnel and auxiliary staff, $3,000 a year if they take health insurance. I was talking to a teacher just the other day and was showing her these figures, and she rightfully pointed out, I could buy a new car every year for what I'm paying in health insurance premiums. And a lot of people are seeing that the health insurance premiums are actually more than their mortgages, and something's wrong when people are paying health insurance more than the homes they live in. The increases went up, and I... The second chart here shows what the annual increases were from 17-18 to 18-19, and I just took custodians, teacher aide, and food service specialist and used a, you know, halfway between the starting and midpoint salary on your range of what those employees would make with a 2% raise. You can see first and foremost, your custodians, teacher aides, and food service specialists, just as an example, cannot even afford insurance. They don't make enough. A teacher aide making $19,208 annually can barely even afford to insure herself, cannot insure her family. And talking with teacher aides, you hear over and over, my children are on chip because we qualify, and my health insurance plan is the county hospital. This is not an Arlington problem, and I know I'm preaching to the choir when I say this. This is a state problem. When I hear every amount of dollar in a raise is eaten up by health insurance, that's not Arlington. That's a state problem. We need better representation down in Austin, and the backbone to stand up and do not only what's right for retired public school employees, but of our active employees too. So, I know you're looking at an additional $120 a year for health insurance, that is fantastic, but you're letting the state off the hook every time you do that. And for your teacher aides, custodians, and food service specialists who cannot even afford insurance, it doesn't do them any benefit. So, I know it's tough decisions for you all to make as far as what the total compensation is, but I know I'm going to be shouting from the mountaintops all summer and fall about what the abomination the state has done for our public school employees, our teachers, our hard-working teachers, aides, and cafeteria employees. And so, I hope you join in me in shouting from that mountaintop. I know Mr. Hogg, Mr. Cale, and others have done a fantastic job already, so thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. All right. Next, we are at items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any trustees wishing to withdraw items from the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, then tonight we'll be considering the items listed on the agenda under consent. Ms. Powell?
President Rice, board members, Dr. Cavassos, there are two bids on the agenda this evening, and in both cases, the district recommends the low bids and the bids represent the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mr. Hibbs?
President Rice, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented by the administration.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Mays?
Second.
Okay. Second by Ms. Mays. Any discussion? Consent passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, moving on, on the agenda, the next item is Discussion/Action, but we're going to swap this tonight and move to Discussion for the Elementary Programming Update. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening we'd like to present some information regarding elementary programming and some transformation in some of our elementary schools. And I want to thank ahead of time the individuals in the audience, specifically to the schools that are represented, the teachers and the administration and the staff that's here. I saw some of them today at their training, so I know they've had a long day, but they're still here and they're still smiling, but I want to thank them ahead of time, because as with everything else that we do in the district, when we get teacher voice and teacher participation and leadership participation from the school level, it's transformative. And we've seen that with Early College High School, our STEM Academy, Career Tech Center, the list goes on and on. And this is going to be another of those examples. So, ahead of time, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Stephen Wertz to start us off, and then you'll hear from the campuses. Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, President Rice, members of the school board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm here tonight to share with you some updates about some work that we're doing in our elementary schools to provide our students with innovative, rigorous, and relevant learning experiences. I, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, I'm joined by Jamie McDougall, the principal at Crowe, and Cody Van Dusse, the principal at Piercy, who have been highly engaged in this process at each of their two campuses, and we're thankful for all the teachers here who came tonight to support some of the work that we're going to describe to you tonight. I thought I would first start off by just reminding everyone about what our beliefs are in Arlington ISD, and we do believe that in order for us to achieve the goals that we have set for our students, that it requires a focused vision. We do believe that there has to be effective teaching and leadership at the schools, and then we also want to have a culture of continuous improvement where kids can excel. And in order to do an idea around continuous improvement, I think it lends itself to the conversation we're having this evening around programming, because we're constantly trying to find ways to innovate and provide our students with learning experiences that will prepare them for a future which looks very different than what it could look like today, even 10 years from now. This, as we all know, is our vision and mission, and I wanted just to highlight two points about that. One is the mission specifically, which talks about empowering our students to become responsible citizens, and I think you're going to find in some of the discussion points we talked about tonight that there is an element specifically around students' ability to serve in their community and to leverage their skills to impact it in a positive way, and then also to give kids access to innovative experiences that press not only their minds through rigorous learning, but also gives them access to real problems that are highly relevant in the communities that they actually live in. We believe that this not only increases their understanding of concepts, but also their engagement in the classroom. So, our strategic plan is based around four performance objective categories, and each of our strategies that are aligned in each of these four categories, we believe produces what we define as an exceptionally prepared AISD student. And I thought tonight what I would do is share with you how the programs we're about to describe to you actually impact multiple strategies across multiple performance objective categories. Often, when I'm in front of you and I'm talking about the work we're doing, I specifically call out one strategy, and this is exactly how we're doing it. The unique things about these programs is that they actually reach across multiple strategies, so in some ways, there's a level of efficiency here, because you're actually providing kids with innovative, rigorous, and relevant learning experiences, but in so doing, you're also increasing access to many, many things that we're trying to give kids access to in our strategies. So, I called out a few of the strategies specifically in each of the categories where these programs are directly aligned. So, for example, in academic achievement, these strategies, which are about increasing access to instruction and curricular activities, expanding our programs around rural languages and languages other than English, expanding pre-K offerings for our students. The programs we're about to describe tonight will also increase our students' engagement in career-related activities. You'll also see opportunities where kids will have access to service learning, where they can apply their skills in a servant leadership-type fashion. We... These programs are designed to enhance the safety and emotional well-being of our students by also increasing their awareness around cultural differences in the world, and then we're also expanding opportunities for our students to, in our schools, to interact and engage in meaningful partnerships within the community, and also have chances to volunteer outside of their schools. So, these are our three district main priorities. We... I know you've seen these before, college and career readiness, growing and developing people in the learning experience. As you study and we think about these three priorities, we can see very clearly how interrelated all of them are. Today, our... Today, our conversation is going to be primarily centered around the actual learner's experience. And I say that in one side and that the other side say by engaging those experiences, it will produce opportunities for them to become college and career-ready. So I wanted to focus for a moment on our cultural tenants because I think what you're about to hear tonight is an example of cultural tenants in action. One of our cultural tenants is promoting risk-taking. And a lot of times when we try to develop innovative programs, there are times where we develop them at the system level and we push them out to schools. And then other times, the actual idea comes from the schools and pushed inward. And I think tonight, you're going to see examples of both of those two things. One, where we had ideas about, that were connected to the strategic plan, where we provide programs in strategic places within the community. And then in two other options tonight, you're going to see an example where two schools recognize a need for their own students and potential opportunities that they could provide them and decided to take a risk in developing programmatic, a program designed to meet those needs. And so I just wanted to, one, commend the schools for being willing to step forward and take those risks and highlight this as an example of our cultural tenants actually in action. So when we design programs, there are things as a system we have to consider. And I know you all know this very well, we don't just design a program and then place it at a school. We're very committed to making sure the programs meet a level of excellence. And one of the things that we are very adamant about not doing is having a school that is a general school and typical, like you would find in normal elementary school, that has a fancy name on the front of the building. If you go into the building and you see the program that's in there, it, what's labeled as what the school actually is should resonate to what you actually see and do. And I think the academies that we designed a few years ago are a good example of that. They're, they're, they were transformed, those schools were transformed. And the idea is very similar in these circumstances. So the first thing we do is we ask the big question, why, like, what's the rationale for a program? Why would we want to do the program that we're proposing? What is the actual description? Like, what is the meat of the actual program itself? We also consider the how and the who. So what is the program design and what are the impacted populations that would actually engage in the program? And then finally, we get down to logistics about timeline, program development and how we'll go about implementing it. And so we consider the answers to all of these questions as we design. And this is just a rundown kind of bullet list and I won't go through it in much detail because I know you have it in front of you, but these are all the logistical things we think about as we design programs. So not only about the instructional model, whether it's research-based and what kinds of impact it has on professional learning and training for teachers, but also budget and facilities and space and sustainability. What we don't want to do is generate a program that won't sustain itself over time. We want one that will impact our kids for decades. So we consider all of those things in our thinking. And one important point about all of that is we try to include stakeholder involvement in that discussion. We work really hard not to have isolated conversations. I think the teachers here are a good example of having been engaged in that conversation with their principals at their schools as they started ideating and thinking about what the program could look like at their individual sites. And we're committed to continuing that process across the district to embed stakeholders in our decision-making. The very first program I want to share with you is a world languages, a world language academy that's at the current campus of Wimbis Elementary. Wimbis, as you know, is a school here in Arlington, which is a general elementary school. And we are, our goal is to repurpose and transform that school into a world language academy. There are some specific goals and objectives that we have in terms of why we would want to do a world languages academy and how does it look different than, say, the fine arts dual language? One thing is we want to do is we want to do what the board has recommended or asked us to do, which is increase our students' access to dual language programming. There is piles and piles of research that shows that kids that engage in dual language program outperform their peers over long periods of time. It's a skill that they can leverage throughout their life. And so we want to try to capitalize that while they're young, where language acquisition is developmentally the most appropriate place to start. We also want to facilitate increased cultural awareness. Our world is much smaller than it used to be and we want to teach our kids how to interact with people who think and act differently than they do. We, I suspect many of our students, if not the majority, will find themselves in situations in the workforce where that's in fact the case. We also want to give them an opportunity to leverage their language skills to generate future opportunities for themselves. You know, we want to prepare them for the college or the career of their choice. And having an additional language under your belt, so to speak, gives you increased access to opportunity. Oh, we want to build international-mindedness and also maximize opportunities for them to increase their communication skills and social awareness. These are some of the, just the general outcomes that we believe can be generated for students in terms of behaviors and learning opportunities by going through a world language academy. I want to share with you some of our preliminary program design. And I want to preface this slide along with the ones that will come from the two principals to say, we're in preliminary mode. So we are literally in design phase. Nothing that you see in front of you today is necessarily written in stone. As we go through the design process, we may make alterations and changes. This is just the initial stab at what we're kind of talking about. We wanted to orient you to what our thinking has been. So the first thing around a world languages academy is multiple tracks. Our goal is actually to provide our students with multiple tracks in the dual program. Oftentimes, when you go to a dual program, especially in Texas, it's a Spanish track. And that's a very appropriate thing to do. We intend to include that in this academy because that is the language that you find most often here in Texas and it will be actually the majority language in not too many years. But we also know there are other students who have interests in other languages and so we want to provide them. So we are in the process of selecting multiple languages that kids could do dual in. We haven't landed on specifically which ones yet. There are lots of things to consider in terms of like staffing and sustainability and things like that. But we could envision kids having a track in French, possibly a track in Portuguese or a track in Mandarin Chinese. We just want to provide kids with that opportunity to make choice, have choice be available to them and then to give them pathway to reach their goals. We will, we intend to have a dual language model that's very similar to the academies where it's a two teacher model so that when kids are in the language, the target language, their environment is that language. And when they're in their native language, the environment is within that native language. The program will have opportunities for cultural awareness, integration of the arts. We will also be introducing hopefully an opportunity for them to have access to a third language. So just similar to the academies, if your track is in Spanish, you'll be introduced to Mandarin Chinese. If there are three tracks in a building, for example, and my track is Spanish, I could pick one of the other two as a sub-language to learn later on down the years and we want to, we want to consider that as a possibility. Of course, summer programming and partnerships so our kids have access to meaningful experiences. We would love to provide opportunities for our kids to have access to native speakers in native environments as they, as they matriculate through Arlington. We're not quite sure exactly the logistics of how that would work, but we do believe that the more access kids have to native speakers, the more proficient they'll become. And then finally, it is, it would be an application-based school. So students that are currently sitting at Wimbis, who come back to the actual program design would be coming back through an application process, which would be embedded into the, the schools of choice application process that we already have in Arlington. It wouldn't be a separate process. There are several implications to this program in terms of grade levels. And I want to preface this specific slide by saying that Wimbis is a full school with lots of space. And so when you're building this program, the size of the cohorts that we would put in each of the years, we envision kind of staggering them so we can maximize the facility as much as possible while also recognizing that if you're starting a dual program, you have to start in the early years. You can't start in fourth grade. So for example, our vision is to start with a pre-K one, which would have three grade level bands. This would give our pre-K students access to new and innovative programming at the pre-K level in the dual language and then potentially bleed those grade levels up over the course of the year. This has, this slide specifically has a lot of potential to change. There's still a lot of factors that are kind of out there, so we're not really sure exactly how we can land. We do envision starting with primary grades, but in terms of like where kids, how, do we have other kids still in the building that we, that we transition out or not? Those are still questions that we have yet to answer. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview or a brief stab at the idea that the dual program starts primarily in the primary years and we kind of work our way through it. In terms of timeline, in terms of Wimbis for timeline, much of our development process is happening in the summer. And then of course, we'll go through all the logistics of application and placement of students in the spring with, which will be aligned with our current timelines for specialized programs. What I'd like to do now is introduce Jamie McDougal to you. She's the principal at Crowe and she's going to share with you the details around a new leadership academy that we're proposing over at Crowe Elementary.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Rice, members of the board and Dr. Cavassos. I'm very excited to speak with you this evening about Crowe becoming a leadership academy. But first, I'd love to introduce my amazing team. So all the people in the purple shirts, can they stand up? This is your cue to cheer. They said, can we cheer? And I said, sure, why not? The board, you know, spice it up. I'd really love to thank my incredible team for engaging in this work with me and coming together to do something amazing for students. The idea for becoming a leadership academy with service opportunities has been developed naturally as we embrace capturing kids' hearts and developed our culture. Starting with capturing kids' hearts, we built relationships with the students and through these relationships, we've cultivated connections that go beyond just academics. And it's truly allowed staff members to invest in the student holistically. That's me, don't let the smile and the, I already told my staff, don't let the dress and the kittens and the smile fool you. But as I was reflecting on this experience, I was reflecting on myself as a learner. And of course, growing up, I questioned everything, which I'm sure was pretty annoying to my parents. And I didn't always feel connected to school. I felt that my thinking was different and I felt that sometimes my teachers got that, but most of the time they didn't. And so I realized as I reflected that a lot of my growth actually came from experiences outside of school, particularly experiences to lead initiatives, to lead projects and to serve others. This has given me the lens of wanting the learner experience to be meaningful and looking for ways specifically to bring service and leadership to Crowe. Feed my starving children this past year, and we had this in February, was a great way to springboard into this kind of learning. Students and families came together to pack over 108,000 meals, which is enough to feed 298 children for a year. So, yeah, it was, there was power there, these guys. And I think with this, our students and our staff, our community realize, wow, whenever we come together, we can do something big. We can do big and incredible things. We can make an impact. As a result of this project, we got invited to come to We Day, where youth and celebrities from around the world come together and talk about ways that they can impact the world. For one of our fifth graders to be able to have the opportunity to stand on a national platform and share our story was incredible. Our students got to hear about other youth all over the world and be inspired and inspiring to those. Engage in that process where we share and it just grows. For us, becoming a leadership academy and implementing the IB primary years program is a natural continuation of the work that we've already done. Our survey feedback, being a national showcase, capturing kids' heart school and the beautiful new front entrance show that we have already laid a strong foundation and are ready for this next step. I wanted to refer back to the strategic plan that Dr. Words referenced earlier because I think that the connection and alignment is truly beautiful. In looking at the research for college readiness, we know that there's an opportunity to better equip our students for college. Allowing students to drive their own learning and the empowerment that comes from service will support our students with college readiness. As well, we know that students who go on to complete an IB diploma will enter a state school or college with 24 college credits. Whenever we look at workforce readiness and we talk about technical skills versus emotional intelligence and soft skills, research shows that a resounding 85% of your career successes are attributed to your soft skills. Your ability to communicate, your ability to advocate, your ability to collaborate and problem solve. And we also know that the lack of these skills is the number one reason for separation of employment or for people getting passed over for a promotion. So while it's true that our students can have a job with just technical skills, we want for our students to have a career and not just a job. We want for our students to have something that lasts and that goes on and that grows with them. And in order for them to do that, they have to explicitly teach and grow in these soft skills and this emotional talent, intelligence. They have to develop those things. In the areas of academic achievement, leadership, citizen and responsibility, the IB framework supports our students in a vibrant way. For students to inquire and care about the world, for them to understand other perspectives and honor different perspectives is powerful. Through the IB philosophy, we find the learner profile, an opportunity to inspire a quest for learning and to develop well-rounded students, which I think again is our continuation of work with capturing kids' hearts, with Cougar Pride. At our, at Crowe, Cougar Pride really truly means something. Positivity, respect, integrity, determination and excellence. But it's gone beyond that to be about a way of being. And I think that this is a beautiful extension of that. This slide has a lot on it, don't worry, I won't read all of it to you. But this slide is a great overview and it shows how the IB program is a comprehensive framework that develops students' thinking and their character. A teacher from Round Rock ISD said, "It develops in them the belief that they can make a difference, that they can change the world. It builds in the action piece. I'm going to learn about it, I care about it, and I'm going to do something about it." This is our timeline for rollout. This past spring, the design team has been working hard. We've gone and visited some schools and really talked about what would it look like to embrace this, this fully and to move into being a leadership academy. We plan to launch in the fall of 2019 as a leadership academy with service opportunities and then to consider our candidacy and authorization process with IB. I think the overall question is how can we design learning that matters? And the answer is simple. We expand the learning beyond the four walls of the school into life. Our students don't become empowered by solving fake problems. They don't become empowered by solving theoretical needs. They become empowered by seeing real people and real struggles and real needs, responding to those and taking action. It's one of my favorite quotes ever. "Hope is like a road in the country." There never, there was never a road, but when many people walk on it, the road comes into existence. But I don't just want hope for our students. I want our students to be thinkers, to be risk-takers, to be caring and to be reflective. And as those students, as our students, walk those characteristics, their path comes into existence, one that leads them to their true purpose and their life's work. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Esquodia Van Dusy from Piercy.
Well, good evening, Dr. Rice, board members and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for having us here this evening. And I too want to thank my faculty. Several of my teachers were here, are here this evening. Would y'all get standing? Thank you. I am thrilled to be talking with you tonight about our STEM academy. And just a little bit of a background, at the convocation for the beginning of the year, Dr. Cavassos talked about schools of choice. And since that very afternoon, we've been planning this. This is not me getting up here talking about my idea. We've been talking about this all year long and I'm so excited that we can finally start talking about it with everybody else. So, thank you. One of the reasons why we wanted to do a STEM academy is we know as we're looking for college and career readiness, that we don't know necessarily what careers our students will have the opportunity to apply for. So we've got to help them to be prepared for whatever comes their way. And so as the AISD goal is 100% of our students will be ready for college, career and citizenship, then the goal for the Piercy STEM Academy is that 100% of our Piercy Academy students will be prepared for that next level of learning, to be successful there and beyond, so that we can support the Arlington ISD goal for all of our students. A little introduction to our campus. We are not a Title I school, but we are 63% socioeconomic, 55% at-risk. We have a very diverse population, as you can see on this slide there. And with STEM, with a STEM-focused academy, we are directly contributing to closing gaps for our students and to give them the very best opportunities for them to have success in the future. Another great thing is we have already started this process. Thank you for approving and allowing us to have STEM labs. That was a platform for us to begin this process. And we have been able to see that STEM learning for our students is so highly engaging. It is merging science and math and bringing in the technology piece and the engineering piece. And our kids love going to STEM and they love doing STEM in the classrooms. And so we've been able to maximize that to the, to the greatest extent that we could possible. And some of the things that we found is of the entire school year, we only had one student referral that came out of a STEM environment. And so this directly contributes not only to their success academically, but to their success socially and behaviorally as well. And for our kids to be successful, we need to be, them to be engaged in the learning. And this is something that is very important to them. They are doing things and creating things that are related to problems that directly impact them and that affect them and that are important to them. And so when they value what they're doing, they are all hands on deck. They want to do it and they want to do it well. Another great thing is now that we want to expand, we have the opportunity, we are the farthest south school in the district, literally walk across the street and you're in another district. And so we want to expand out of what we have already been doing. We want to expand into all of our classrooms and into all of our classrooms and into the surrounding community, and we've got some capacity to do that, and so we're really excited about, um, this venture. What is most important is the learning experience. We've talked about providing opportunities for students, what is it like to be a learner? And, um, two years ago, we were asked to put ourselves in the place of a learner at our campus, and what did it mean to be a PRC student all day long? And that's very eye-opening when you see it from the student's perspective. So when we're thinking about what students are involved in every day, this is where it's very important, and we want to, um, embed those real-world problem-solving into their everyday, not just weekly, not just monthly, not just here, you know, we're gonna do this project on the side, but this is how we learn. Uh, the STEM process really values the learning process. It's not always about finding a correct end result, it's about valuing the learning along the way, that failure is just the first attempt in learning. That is the time, we've got to figure out what works, what doesn't work, why it doesn't work, and what we need to do to make changes, and those are skills that students need. And so this is providing them that offer, opportunity. And as Jamie was talking about, those life-ready skills, um, our program as well is going to emphasize those, and specifically, the problem-solving, the creativity, the communication, the collaboration, the critical thinking. STEM learning is not done in a vacuum, it's not done individually, this is groups working together, and our students need these skills now more than ever because we don't know whatness, what jobs they will, um, have access to. Also, to provide a, a more enriching experience for our students, our STEM Academy experience will also incorporate STEM field trips and speakers. Um, when you ask a child what they want to be when they grow up, they have a lot of really great ideas of what that is, and as the years go on, uh, their ideas kind of get squashed sometimes, and they get narrowed because they don't always see the pathway, um, or that opportunity, and so we want them to see how this can actually impact them and pave the road for them to do what they want to do. Uh, we want to provide those opportunities outside of our school day with, um, clubs and competitions, there's so much out there for them to be involved in, we want them to see what they can actually do, um, to impact our community. And we also want to fully utilize our STEM Labs and bring that into our classrooms with, uh, the, with teachers that can help us to focus in on science and engineering and math and technology. We want them to learn how to code and to do robotics and to, um, create websites and app design, those are things that kids are very interested in doing, and how can we embed those into what they're learning? So we're excited to bring those components. For the instructional model, that, um, like I said, we want it to be, um, in, integrated into all of our core content classes, we do want to start with math and science, but there's, um, with our youngest students, we've always had a literacy component, we find that that's very important. We, um, don't want to always focus on math by itself or science by itself, and that's how the traditional school has been done, and so we want to blend those. And there are some resources that, um, the district has already supported with STEM scopes, and we want to fully utilize those across all of the grade levels and then bring in one that supports with the technology components as well. And then we've got some, uh, phenomenal teachers that we are working on, how do we develop these? How do we help to look at that curriculum? How do we blend those? And what kinds of, uh, STEM opportunities and challenges and questions can we ask that we can provide or bring into the classroom for our kids, um, to find that, that success? Uh, this is one of the things I'm really excited about. Um, this is, STEM learning is about how you provide that learning opportunity for a student, and it doesn't have to start in a one grade and then build up. You can do STEM learning whether you're in sixth grade or in pre-K. And one of the things that I, um, that was very important to us is providing access to all of our PRC students. And so our idea is a roll-down method rather, rather than a roll-up. So we are talking about year one being, um, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and so in year one, our sixth graders will have one year, but they'll get one year, and they don't keep moving on and never having access to that, the program. So we're gonna start with fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Year two, add in second and third grade, year three, add in kindergarten and first grade, and what this means is it's providing equity, and everybody gets an opportunity by year three. So everybody who's in our building on year one will be part of the full academy experience by or before year three, and we're very excited about that. Um, and another thing is, those who are not necessarily in the academy, um, will still have access to the types of experiences we're trying to provide right now, just not to the full extent as our, the academy experience will be able to offer. So that one's a, a very exciting piece for us. Uh, the timeline, we have already begun, uh, we have begun the campus certification to become a nationally certified STEM school, and with that, six of our teachers are working on their national certification as well, and that part, process has already begun, and our plan is to build more opportunities for our teachers to go through that very intensive program so that our whole campus is nationally certified, um, to, to provide STEM learning, um, and that comes with, um, guid, guidance constantly throughout, you've got coaching that helps us through that. Um, we've got our STEM committee, many of these individuals are on the committee. Um, we want to adapt this T-STEM blueprint, Texas has a blueprint that is for grades six through twelve, there's not one for Texas that is for elementary, and so we are taking that task upon ourselves to create a blueprint that then can be used in other elementary schools that may want to travel down this path in the future in Arlington. Um, and how can we measure what we're putting into place? And we're, we're beginning the professional learning because we know that changing how we teach and changing how we provide these, um, learning opportunities requires some professional development and, and learning for our teachers. Next year, we're looking at the planning, um, the planning process, next year being a planning year, as Dr. Wertz said, there's already an application process, um, the publicity that comes with that with parents and holding meetings and, and, um, reviewing all of those applicants and all of these things, uh, so that next year is a planning year so that we are ready to launch in nineteen-twenty with our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And then as Dr. Wertz was talking about, um, the tenants, um, our program really aligns to all of the tenants, and I won't read them all, but I have said many times, I'm very, uh, the one that I love the most, most is promoting risk-taking because we recognize that it's risky to do something different, and it may not always work, and so we have to take that risk. And so what we're doing with this is we're challenging the status quo of what has traditionally been expected in the school setting and recognize that we want to do something different and provide that excitement for our students and so that we can have exciting outcomes as well. We are an active learning cycle campus already, and the STEM Academy really aligns the active learning cycle with AISD's engineering design process. They marry very, very well, and so we want to show how those work well together, um, when we are designing our lessons. And we, um, align to the strategic plan, I know you've heard me say there's the academic component there, we're a high, highly successful campus, we want to continue and even increase that. College readiness, the first time we talked about college readiness at kindergarten, we thought that that was a pretty comical idea, but no, this is what we're talking about, we're providing them those skills to be ready, and then of course, the workforce readiness. And lastly, our STEM Academy is committed to providing access to learning experiences that will prepare students for jobs that have not yet been created, to excel in problem-solving situations and to thrive in all of their future endeavors, because we cannot continue to teach students only what is already known, we have to teach them to approach the unknown with confidence, ingenuity, and perseverance necessary to navigate it. Thank you very much.
So as you can see, we have very, very capable principals and staff who have innovative ideas and then the capacity to like bring them into fruition, so I'm really grateful for both of these exceptional leaders, the things that they, uh, teach us and push us, and, um, and for all the staff that helped make these things possible for our students. So, any questions?
Uh, there are questions, and thank you for the information. Really, really exciting stuff, uh, just very exciting, yes, the board's lighting up. Uh, first up, Mr. Hibbs.
There we go. Didn't want me to talk. You know what? I don't know, have you been like sitting with these two principals and just, you exude enthusiasm, and then you get these two principals that exude enthusiasm?
They bring it.
It's no secret that you've got two schools here that are bucking trends, um, of what urban district schools are supposed to be doing. You guys are, are like excelling at such a rate in both of you, uh, and it, it's a testament to leadership within your campus, and I, I, you know, I look out and this is two of the best of the best that we have in our district, and I thank you for that, but for each one of you teachers to be here tonight, you didn't need to be here, but you came in support of this, in this program, and I, I thank you for that, and I thank you for your commitment, because you know, if there's a way that we could go and, um, clone all of you to our eighty-five-hundred employees to say that this is not just merely a job for me, it's, it's the way that I make a positive impact in these children and change future generations. Uh, truly, you guys are game changers, and, and with that, I really don't have a question, I just thank you for what you're doing. And I just, I, I just say, continue to do that, uh, because we're blessed because we have you. So with that, I'll, I'll turn back over.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, President Raj. Uh, thank you once again for this great presentation, excitement to think and look forward to what, uh, this is gonna bring in the outcomes for our students, it's just very, very exciting, and I share the same sentiments as my colleague, Mr. Hibbs. Thank y'all teachers for being here to support, because what that tells us is that we've got a buy-in at the schools, which will do nothing but benefit our students, so thank you for being here. I only have a couple of questions. Uh, one, I have a comment, what I'm really enjoying seeing is the theme of not just what our mission and our vision is, but what I like to see is that the visions, the goals, a lot of what we're seeing are things that we would hear in a presentation that's given if we're talking about our high schools, if we're talking about our junior highs, and we're, I'm seeing the same theme all the way through, which makes me think by the time they get to that high school, it's not even a question anymore. They, they've experienced it, they've gone through the motions, it's just natural, and I really, really love seeing that, and once again, it just makes me really excited for the students here at AISD. On page seven, as far as their preliminary program design, uh, my thought is, and I hope I'm not jumping ahead, but I'm also still thinking about the sustainability all the way through high school. So we started, we have this awesome, amazing program.
This one?
Preliminary, that, that one.
Okay.
So we have this awesome, amazing program, and then how is it going to continue to matriculate as they go through high school?
So that is, that, that is the question we have to answer, it's the same question we've answered, we're in the process of answering for the, the two academies. The goal is that there is a matriculated pathway for students who enter these programs, and so once you launch it at elementary ranks, then you, your very next task is to figure out, okay, so what's next in terms of those kids? So we will have to develop a pathway for kids, the World Languages Academy. Um, my belief is that there's a natural merge with them where the two, other two dual-language academies are, because the cohorts that'll be coming out, they can lend themselves into the same junior high and high school pathways that we end up developing. In terms of, um, the Leadership Academy, one of the discussion points that we've talked about is that this is the foundation for the academic curriculum is around the primary years IB program. So you have a primary years IB program, and then at the high school where these kids feed into, you have the IB program, well, there's a middle years program somewhere in between, and so some of our discussion is, so how do we leverage some of the junior highs where these kids will naturally go into so they can continue their studies around IB and then naturally feed into a high school program? It's interesting, I'll just give you one quick, um, anecdotal kind of story, I had a student from Sam Houston come to see me this year. Whenever I get an email from a student, I just want to stop and have them come sit with me, because I'm always curious, because I, it's not very often where a student will advocate for themselves in a very strong way, and as he was graduating, um, this last weekend, um, we caught each other's contact, eye contact, and he was saying how nervous he was about to cross his face, but anyways, he went through the IB program, he won the, he, he earned the IB diploma, and he was advocating for his brother, who is in middle school, to have middle years IB, and he's like, "If I had had that when I was younger, I would have been so much more prepared." And I will say this student has been super persistent, which I really appreciate. And so, um, one of the things I was able to say to him was, you know what, we're actually thinking about these things, um, and we are thinking about starting all the way in the elementary ranks, and so I say all that to say that there are natural pathways that we're considering, we'll have to do the same around PRC too as they move forward, we always want to grow the STEM program at the, at the secondary high school level. Um, our biggest gap that we're all aware of is that we have to find solutions for kids that are sitting in junior high.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's encouraging. Um, and then as we were talking about the learning process, so what have we learned from our current dual academy programs that we have that either we've seen that we're working very well or things that we see that could maybe make a difference as we move into starting at a new campus?
So the actual process, um, for the instructional process at the dual, um, the two dual academies are, is going well. Uh, this is a different academy, and the reason I say that the, the challenges around the other two academies in this one, the reason why they're different is because there's the element of fine arts, which also consumes a portion of the day, and so you have to compact academic learning into a shorter amount of time because there's another portion of time in the other academies that's can, that's given to fine arts. While fine arts will still be embedded at these schools, like they'll still have access to same fine arts programming that all the general ed kids do, the volume of fine arts that you see at the other two academies won't be at this school, that, because that won't be the point of this academy. So the things that are working are the two teacher, two, um, the two teacher model is actually something that's been very successful at the two places, and then also giving kids access to the, both languages in each of the content areas. So typically in dual language, what you'll find is some dual language models, they'll have one specific language for one specific, um, content area. Our goal over our dual language program is that kids over the course of their matriculation will have access to learning and articulating that language in a variety of settings, including each of the content areas, because when you're a fluent Spanish speaker, for example, you don't speak just math, you also have to speak all the other content areas. So those are a couple of things that are working. The other thing that I think is working well is just giving kids access to cultural awareness, giving them access to actually express themselves even in the arts, using the language that they have, we've seen that at some of the academies in terms of their programming. So I think there are a lot of lessons that we can learn that we can lend into this one, the difference in this one, like, like I mentioned early, will be that it'll be multiple tracks, which is actually very exciting. Um, when we were designing the two academies, we went, uh, out of state to find best practice, and we saw a school that would, had probably like six tracks going on, and it was incredible. When they spoke, when they went to their second, their third language coursework in the upper grades, they were being taught and speaking only in that third language, it wasn't just exposure, and so we have the same goals for this program.
That is great, that is great. Well, thank you, those questions for me, for both schools, and thank y'all again for your presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Raj. Well, I echo what, uh, Ms. Mays, uh, just said, I, it, it is so neat that we are starting, you know, uh, instead of at the high school levels, we're starting these with our youngest students, and we're gonna grow these little people, you know, to be ready and exceptionally prepared, uh, for whatever comes next, and we don't know what that is.
Right.
Uh, and wait until they're in high school and then figure it out, you know, and that just never has seemed like the best idea to me. So I think we're, in other words, I think we're really getting this right, and I want to say, ye, yes, Doc, Mr. Hibbs, if we could just clone McDougall and Vanduzzi, uh, you know, it would be amazing, um, you know, for our leadership, and, and I, I know there are a lot of other wonderful leaders out there, but, you know, you two are here and we can heap the praise on you tonight. Anyway, and of course, the other fascinating thing is that engaged kids don't present as many behavior problems, and that is, you know, wonderful, kids on task, good idea. I had one question on the, um, uh, oh, golly, what are we calling it? Well, World Language Academy. Um, we, on, gosh, it's page eight, so it's probably the next slide after this one, there we go. Uh, we're saying that pre-K through first would begin in twenty-nineteen.
Yes.
So we're talking three-year-olds, four-year-olds, kindergartners, and first graders.
It probably will not include three-year-olds, it'll be four-year-old pre-K.
Okay.
And then first grade. The reason we're not going to second grade is, um, it gets to be too advanced for dual.
Yeah, I can understand. I think three levels is, you know, cohorts is probably good, and, uh, it, I think you said at this point, we don't have an idea of how large those cohorts are gonna be.
Not yet, we do intend to maximize the facility as much as We do intend to maximize the facility as much as possible, but you can't fill it completely that way because there's cohorts behind them. So one of the things we did with the academies, and we did it a little different at Corey than we did at Jones, is we kind of created what I would call like this hourglass kind of stratified way of cohorts. So you're going to see, like, when we started the program, we started with a large cohort and then we reduced it so that we can maximize space. And we'll probably do something similar in this situation so we can give as many kids as, the opportunity as possible while also recognizing the constraints of the facility. Yeah.
Okay. I think that was my only question. Team Crow, Keem Piercy, best of luck. I can't wait to come out and see how this rolls. And thank you, thank you so much for taking on this exploration of new territory for the AISD. Y'all are, I know, going to be very successful and we appreciate the extra effort that I know it's going to take. So thank you very much. Thank you, ladies, thank you.
Doctor.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Chapa?
I just want to add some comment and color to it, a little bit motivated by my own personal experience. My dad and his brothers went to Crow Elementary, and I have three brothers and three sisters, and five of the seven of us went to Crow for at least part of our experience, so. And, you know, to point that out, and this applies to all the programs that we're talking about here, but it's something that I think is really important about these particular types of programs that draw from, will draw from across the district. My two oldest kids go to Corey Academy. And something that was a big selling point for me was not just the Spanish language and the fine arts, but was the opportunity for my students, for my kids, to go to school with kids from across the district. And growing up in Arlington, and especially if you're over on the east side, you know, sometimes you get the sense that we're a little, we live in a little bubble over there. And it's a big city, and people, children will grow up in the city and not have the opportunity to cross some of those boundaries. But programs like this by design will require that those boundaries be crossed. And I think our students will be all the better for it. And especially, again, going back to my experience being from the east side and from Crow, I think it is phenomenal that we are investing in students, particularly students who, as the slide presentation pointed out, are statistically less likely to end up where their more fluent peers end up. And we're making this campus into a flagship program and an example for the entire city. And it's going to be something to be proud of, and I look really, I really look forward to seeing that come to fruition. So thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Well said, Mr. Chapa. I didn't go to Crow, but I grew up playing golf at Meadowbrook Nine. And that's why I learned, and if I broke any windows at that time, I was a terrible golfer learning, I'm still terrible. So, but, and Dr. Vasos, I skipped class in high school to play at Meadowbrook Nine also. I'm just warning you. It was like $4 to walk and play nine holes, it was great. So, thank you. Yeah, I get to confess, that's right, Ms. Walton, it makes me feel better. It's part of my step program to. With that, thank you guys for being here, and thank you, Dr. Wertz and staff for doing this. The biggest complaint we have, the board has had, is what's taking so long? Right, I mean, let's be honest, when we first started talking about this, we said, how do we roll it out to multiple programs? How do we roll it out? As Mr. Chapa and I can both attest, I have a three-and-a-half-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old. This is what parents of all socioeconomic groups are looking for. Right? I mean, this is plain and simple. If I hear my wife and all her friends talk about this more, it drives me crazy about going through there. But this is, this is the request from parents, this is what we're trying to get to, these specialty programs, the world languages. Mr. Wertz, let me ask you this, you know, I've set in on multiple times for this district to be approved to be IB. I think IB is one of the greatest programs. You talk to IB kids and I immediately feel dumb talking to them because you send in on their theory of knowledge or whatever.
[inaudible]
There's lots I should have done different, Ms. Walton, but, look where it got me, I'm on the school board, so I guess I'm paying my punishment now. I don't even know where I was going now, Ms. Walton. Let me ask, Dr. Wertz, you said you explored all, why IB? Why is the focus on IB? Is that because it's modeling to our high school level? You know, I hear of other leadership programs, there are things that are going out. I just want to know why IB. I think it's, I believe in IB, I saw those who want to know what else was explored.
So I'll give you my explanation, and I'm going to let Jamie answer from her perspective. But I think the thing that intrigued me most about IB is, one, of course, it generates a pathway for kids. That's, logistically, let's think about that, it's this idea that we have kids that enter into programs at secondary, but there's so many other ways to prepare them along the way, and we're just not doing it. You know, if you're, we wait until you get to high school. And it kind of gets back to what Carlos told me in my office, which is, I could have done this way earlier, I'd have been way better. And then the other thing about it too is just the design of the curriculum for IB. When you think about leadership, for example, and service learning, IB is really designed to help kids think about how to leverage their learning and their thinking to solve and think about real-world problems that happen around the world. And so, you, the actual curriculum in IB is designed in such a way that it generates a certain skill set with kids that is pretty comprehensive. And so, as we were thinking about the Leadership Academy, and Ms. McDougal brought it up, and we were talking, one of the suggestions was to look at IB, and that was one of the reasons. Because I feel like it's innovative, you're not going to find lots of opportunities for kids to do primary years IB anywhere, really. If you think about the metroplex, it's pretty limited. And the outcomes that kids experience in terms of their skill sets, their social awareness, and like she had mentioned earlier, international mindedness, it lends itself to a marriage with service. And I think one of the things that's most passionate about, that I think is some of the greatest passion that comes out of Crow is this, and she started the entire presentation with it, is about like, what are they doing to give back? And the we, the we event was actually really powerful, you know, like she said, we had a student on the national stage. So, one of the things that Jamie and I have talked a lot about is the fact that leadership, learning about leadership is one thing. The articulation of leadership happens through service. And so if you don't marry those two things together and provide the platform for them to leverage the things they're learning in a way that's actually hitting real-world problems, you've kind of missed the mark, and IB lends itself to that. So that's kind of why we were leaning into it. I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
No, I think, I think you're right on, that's, that's a great answer, just leave it at that.
Okay.
I'm sold, Ms. McDougal, no, no when to say when, that's, I'm sold on that one right there. Ms. Mays, you asked the same question, what's the junior high funnel? Let me ask, Dr. Wertz, does this fit into our model of where we're going? Because, because I'm always going to push for where do we go expansion-wise, and very strategic expansion of the growth. I know world languages is something we're looking to start expanding even to more campuses. We've talked about Leadership Academy also being, putting one north, one south on this model. You know, getting into STEM, it's a hot button issue, a lot of people are requesting those. Does this fit our model of where we're expanding to grow on this so that next year we have another couple of schools sitting here talking, and here's our growth model?
So, I would say yes, we have.
You said yes with a yes.
No, I would say yes, but I, the reason I, should I punctuate it? Yes.
Sure, I want, I want it yes, like you just answered the last one.
No, yes, well, the reason I say that is because we already having conversations with some of the junior highs, specifically a junior high around one of the academies. And then, the way we're kind of framing this is, this is the starting point, right? So you have, you have, like, and I think Cody mentioned this, like, you have a model, and one of the things they're doing is they're, they're taking the Texas STEM standards and revamping them at an elementary so that we could replicate it. So we're going to, we're going to start at these locations, and then we're going to see how we can grow. Because the idea is that how do you give access to kids all across the metroplex, I mean, not the metroplex, so all across the city? And so I do suspect that we'll bleed and grow some of these programs to other parts of town. I also say that we probably won't limit ourselves to just these, these specific programs. I can already think of another strand that we are.
We've all brainstormed a lot, yeah.
Yeah, so there's multiple strands. What we're doing is we're trying to start in a way where we can build capacity and do it really, really well, and then you can replicate. So, the answer is yes, but that's probably the way.
And so, let me ask on, two more questions on this. On these programs, I think we were just in the discussion earlier, my thought on this is, if students live in that area, they're going to automatically kind of be in these programs, but then we'll also have seats open for outside, correct?
That's exactly right. So, the difference, so there's a couple of nuances to that question. So in these two, there's two ways we kind of approach academies, right? There are some schools like, like Jones, for example, who had new boundaries done, and you pretty much took all by application. And that's one scenario. With these two specific programs, those students who are already boundaried into Piercy and Crow will go there, this will just be their school now. And then what we will do is we'll open application for empty seats to fill those. Wimbush will be a little bit different.
All right, I understand that. So then let me ask the question, because, as y'all may not know, the state hasn't increased our transportation funding since 1984. We get allocated about 2.6 million, we spend about 10.4 million a year, because I don't believe you have school choice if you don't offer transportation. So are we going to create the same hub and spoke system to bring kids in for those open seats that are on there? And then let me ask one, one more piece on that. If a child, I can't imagine why, they're at Piercy and they don't want to be a part of STEM or anything of that nature, and they want to go somewhere else, are we going to help them go to another school? I don't know why, that's, what else?
Some of the questions are still in design, so we'll still have to talk about specifically what transportation would look like. It's very possible it could go towards something that's hub-related. Of course, we're not, we won't do door-to-door service, that's not what we'll.
Right, we don't do that now.
Right. In terms of helping kids go somewhere else, should they choose to do it, we'll just leverage the current open transfer policy that we have in place, and we, that's already the case. If you, you're not required to go to any school if you don't want to, if there's seats somewhere else, you're available. So, we would help a family find a place where they could be happy.
Okay. And we ask that, because I know this whole board and our staff, the word school choice gets thrown out a lot, and I don't believe it's choice if someone can't get there.
Right, I agree.
So, I'm always going to, always going to fight for that. Let me ask one question, last question. It's not cheap to do these specialized programs, and I know these probably don't require as much build-out as maybe Jones and, and the fine arts require, that's an expensive build-out on that piece. Adding those STEM labs, I think was a huge asset already to Piercy that we did, and we did that across the district. Are we, are any other expecting any major costs that we'll be looking at in the coming future years?
I wouldn't say major. I think there are costs associated specifically with professional learning. There may be implications around staffing as we move down the road, we may want to make some adjustments to the facility, nothing to the extent of like Corey, but, you know, if you're doing a STEM academy, it might lend itself to different types of furniture in different places. But I wouldn't call it anything close to what we've done for.
The other two, or two first two academy, I mean.
Pretty much can start with, in many, very much so with much of what we already have.
Okay. That's perfect, I love these, I look forward to hearing more, and I love approving more.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Dr. Vasos, please.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add to Mr. Hogg is, is that we have also staffed to thank Dr. Wertz and all his team as well, because a lot of these things, like the transportation things like that, have already been processed so that there's actually access to these programs. Beyond that, I think to your question about, you know, is this part of a bigger plan to continue? And it absolutely is. But this board has set a very strong expectation that we certainly appreciate, which is excellence. And so when we start new programs, they have to deliver excellence. And the last thing you want to do is start a program and then people be disappointed and say, well, I don't see any X, Y, Z there, and you promised. I think Early College is a good example. Eighty-five percent of the students got an associate's degree. Statewide average is 40%. We cast the vision and we cast it with excellence. The STEM Academy at Martin, I mean, you just go down the list. And that's what the individuals here have committed to, we've committed to as a staff. And, and I think that drives the proliferation of different programs. But we have to, I think, continue to expect that excellence and then deliver for our students and staff.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, I just had one more quick question. The Feed My Starving Children that we did last year, are we doing that again? Or can we do that again? I don't know.
Absolutely. I think part of that depended on, they offered us corporate sponsorship of $24,000 to pay for the raw materials to do the pack. And so it would just be about getting either, getting them to give me another big sack of money, or getting that from somewhere else. But yes, I would love to bring in opportunities. They're also in the process of launching a permanent site in Dallas, where they're hoping to pack, I think, a million meals a year or something. And so, it's possible that our students might have the opportunity to go over there as well this next year and visit that site. But absolutely, I want to explore that, but not as the only option, as service options go. I think the beautiful thing about service is that it can be a big thing like Feed My Starving Children, where you're bringing in pallets with 2,000 bags, 2,000-pound bags of rice. Or it can be, we rake the neighbor's yard and pick up leaves for her, or we take, we go and, our phenomenal choir goes and sings at the nursing home, or what, they can, the possibilities are endless, but yes.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I just can't pass up the opportunity, since we've had students at Crow and golf players at Crow. I taught at, I taught at Crow for seven years.
So there's no other lights from trustees, I would just like to close with a couple of comments and questions. I'll just reiterate what everybody said up here. Thank you very much for working on the, as I call it, the best next. And this is certainly a wonderful representation, example once again, of how we afford great opportunities. And I know we'll be working on through the access to those opportunities in this choice district. One more thing for us to bring to our legislators, that public school is pretty cool, especially if you do it right. You guys are setting the bar, so thank you for that. A couple of questions. With the World Languages Academy model, you reference going outside the state, looking at kind of a benchmark model where they had six different tracks. Were there additional focal points, say STEM leadership, anything like that? Or was it completely, business, was it completely focused on language?
I'm not saying that that doesn't exist, we didn't see that. And at the time, when we were actually looking at models, we were trying to design the other two academies. And so we went to three states looking at models. We just saw different ways to approach the work, but we were focused primarily on those two bands, which are fine arts and dual. We could not find that anywhere except for one location in the state of Texas, but we didn't feel like the way they were going about it was really a level of excellence at all. So we stole in ideas and thought about them and like, you know, generate our own model here in Arlington, which I think is exceptional. But in terms of like, whether they bled in like business or STEM into a dual model, we didn't see that when we were out, but we weren't actually looking for that either, so.
Okay, okay. And as you progress further with the, in the planning phase on world languages, are you, are you looking potentially at any other things like that, or at this point staying focused on?
We haven't generated ideas specifically about how to embed, like, I'll just give an example, like a STEM with a dual. It's not, I'm not saying it's not possible, it's something we could definitely think about. I think there are some things that we've learned in the academies that we have to kind of work through in terms of like, how do you create a program where those, where different ideas kind of come together and they lend itself to excellence in terms of time and things for kids? One thing I would say is, we do expect or anticipate growing dual language opportunities outside of academy models, so that even if you go to a school where general education is the environment, that there are still tracks for kids to access dual language even in their home schools, we do anticipate probably doing some of that.
That's great, that's great, yeah. And that's definitely, I, we shouldn't take away from the excellent education experience that general education provides in our district, it's phenomenal. So I applaud you for working that in there. And then my last question is related to these specific models with IB Elementary and STEM Elementary. Are there other districts around us that have example schools or benchmark schools like that?
Yes, there is some schools in our neighboring districts that have STEM. I know that, I think you traveled to Dallas, is that right? PYP exists in Dallas. There is also in Capella. I know that exists in Houston. So there are samples and places that we can go. I think one of the things about, that's nice about having some of those as neighbors is they become collegial relationships where you can grow and develop your programs by leaning into each other's ideas and kind of doing, you know, thinking of the bigger ideas that are just good for kids. So there are some examples. I wouldn't say that they're like massively widespread, especially primary years program, but there's a lot of support from IB in terms of just the process that you go through. So I think there's places where we can lean, yeah.
Well, that's great, because anything that, that you can rob and steal or glean as far as strengths and weaknesses from their experience. And share, that's the more appropriate word, yes. And do better. Yes. That's right. Well, very good. Thank you very much for, for the time, for all of you, for being here tonight. And I think with the, the sea of purple, maybe Mr. Hibbs was thinking that this was a TCU event, but it's, it's not. But thank you, and I really appreciate it and really excited to hear the next steps as this continues to develop. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, and you guys can all go if you want to, or you can stay. Sure. We can do that. You want all of them before they leave? Yeah, hold on, everybody. We're gonna, the, the photo op, we'll, we'll take a. Okay. We're, we're breaking for just a moment for a picture. All right. Moving on with our agenda, the next item is discussion action, which is the preliminary 2018-19 budget. Dr. Vasos?
Thank you, President Reis. And this is a continuation of our discussion of our preliminary budget. These are the other pieces of that budget and as well as a review of what we've covered before. We've had discussion and answered questions, and so this is a continuation. Ms. Powell?
Thank you, Dr. Reis, board members. Dr. Vasos, good evening again. This is a continuation of the discussion we began last week. Last week, we talked exclusively about the general fund. We talked a little bit about compensation, and then the board voted on a proposed budget that, or proposed tax rate, rather, that we will include in the notice, or did include in the notice that ran in the paper on Monday for the hearing we'll hold next Thursday for consideration of the proposed budget and the proposed tax rate. Tonight, we're going to revisit the general fund, specifically to talk about compensation and health insurance again, those other considerations that we discussed last week. And then we will also take a first look at the budgets for the other funds, the natural gas fund, the food service fund, the capital projects fund, and the debt service fund. And then again, remind everybody, our desire would be to hopefully adopt this budget on the 21st. We have to by law adopt the budget by June 30th. And we'll actually adopt the tax rate in August after we get our certified property values. So just to circle back on the general fund, our meeting last week, the board voted to approve 21 new positions to be added into the budget. So we have done that. We've added those positions in, and what you see here is a summary of what the budget looks like now with those new positions in it. Also stop for just a minute and point out that we printed a new packet for you all that you should have at your place that has the budget including these new positions in it, along with the preliminary budgets for those other funds we're going to discuss tonight. But again, very summary level information, with the new positions added in, the deficit for the preliminary budget for next year now sits at $29 million. I'll remind everybody that raises are not yet reflected in, in this particular presentation, nor any adjustment to health insurance contributions. The slide again is one we showed last week. It shows our fund balance over several years. And the far right, the balance, or the fund balance bars on the far right reflect what we expect fund balance to be at the end of the 2018-19 year. If we adopt the budget as it is presented this evening, and if we actually ended next year exactly as that budget is adopted with that 29, $29 million deficit. If that were to occur, then our ending unassigned fund balance would represent 3.6 months' worth of operating expenses. And again, salary increases are not yet reflected. So to circle back on our conversations last week, we had some discussion about what adjustments to compensation might look like and health insurance. So to remind everyone, administration was recommending a 2% increase as we think that that will keep us competitive with the market and our, our competitors. A 2% salary increase for all of the general operating fund costs seven point, almost 7.5 million dollars. In terms of health insurance, we contribute to health insurance today. If you are a professional employee, we contribute $2,820 a year. If you're a professional employee and then you are also in the wellness plan, you receive another $240 a year for being in the wellness programs, for a total of $3,060. All of the other employee groups, we contribute $3,000 a year towards health insurance premiums for those employees. And again, another $240 over the year if you are also in the wellness plan, for a total of $3,240. We have about 5,300 employees who participate in health insurance. And to increase that contribution by $120 a year would cost an additional $619,000. So the slide presents several different possible scenarios for the general operating budget. Again, these are just some options. We can look at any other combination of possible additional adjustments to the budget that you all want to consider. But what is reflected here in column one, you see the preliminary budget as it exists right now with those new positions added in and no raise and no health insurance. Column two shows the addition of another roughly $7.5 million that would be for a 2% salary increase. And you see that that would bring the budgeted deficit to $36.5 million. Column three then shows the impact of both a 2% raise and then additional funds for health insurance. And so you can see that if both of those things were approved, then that would bring the, the deficit to $37 million. Going back on the health insurance, it would be our recommendation that any adjustment to health insurance be delivered through the wellness program. So in order to receive any additional compensation through, for health insurance, you would need to participate in the wellness program. Looking at our food service fund, food service is a special revenue fund. And this is the, the fund obviously that provides for the, the school breakfast and school lunch programs. The operations are mostly funded through the federal child nutrition program and the, the federal breakfast program reimbursements, and then also prices that we set for paid meals. So just to give you a little context about that fund, the, the food service fund does not receive any money, any support from the general fund. It is a self-sustaining program. In this past year, 2017-18, food service served over 9.7 million meals to our students across the district. And the percent of our students who qualify for free or reduced price meals is just under 70%. And in total, in this fund and in this program, we employ 641 employees across the district to, to deliver the program to our students and to administer the program and to run our warehouses. Prices for a, a full price paid meal will need to go up this next year by 10 cents. We've seen this for several years now. The federal government, through the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, has a requirement that federal reimbursements cannot subsidize paid meals. And so there's a formula that we have to go through each year. And it's essentially that until our paid price, our paid lunch price reaches amount that equals the federal reimbursement for a free lunch meal, we have to raise our, our lunch price 10 cents. If you keep in mind that generally each year, the federal government also increases their reimbursement rate, there will be a number of years that before we actually catch up to that federal reimbursement rate. So the lunch price is set for next year will need to increase by 10 cents. This doesn't impact reduced price meals. It also doesn't have any effect on breakfast meal prices. This bar chart simply shows over the years, the number of, of meals served, and it breaks those down by category. The blue bars, the blue portion of the bars are free meals that were served during the year. The red bars are reduced price meals, and the green bars are paid meals that were served each year. Generally, food service employees receive the same raises that all other employees receive. And so I show you here the cost of both a 1% raise and a 2% raise for all of the, the individuals in the food service fund. So a 2% raise would cost $226,520. Again, in talking about health insurance, food service employees receive the same benefits that all other employees receive. There are 210 of our health, of our food service employees who participate in health insurance plan. So if we increase contributions towards health insurance for this particular group of employees, we're probably talking about $25,000 cost to do that. In looking at a summary of the food service budget, at the moment, you can see again in the column that is entitled 2018-19 preliminary budget, we are indicating a surplus at the moment of $584,859. There's not a raise built in here yet, nor is there any adjustment for health insurance. If we were to approve a 2% raise and the addition of $120 for health insurance, that would cost about $251,000 total for this fund. So they would still have a, a surplus of all over $300,000. The natural gas fund is also accounted for as a special revenue fund. It accounts for all the revenues that we generate from leasing of mineral rights and also interest that is earned on the fund. The board legally committed these funds a number of years ago to be used for future special projects. And most recently, and the only time that the board has taken action to use any of these funds was the spring, just in the last month, we've approved the, the move of $21 million over to the capital projects funds for investments in the Fine Arts Center and the athletics complex. This particular budget, we typically only budget expenditures as part of the original budget for legal fees and other professional fees that might be associated with operating the fund. And, but at any time during the year, just as we've done recently, the board can certainly take action to appropriate funds for a specific purpose. What we see, as most of us are probably all aware, in the Barnett Shell, production has dropped over the years as oil prices have increased. It's much more lucrative for production companies to drill for oil than it is for natural gas. And so we've seen a shift from drilling in the Barnett Shell for natural gas to, to drilling in other places around Texas for oil. This chart, this bar chart's got a lot of colors on it, but if you look from the bottom, the brown bar that starts and kind of gets bigger and then gets smaller, that's production in the Barnett Shell. And so you can see that that production has dropped off. Prices have been very stable. They've inched up just a bit, but they're, they're very stable across the last several years, and, and they're quite low right now. And so again, there's not a lot of incentive for producers to increase their drilling activities in the Barnett Shell. So we base our budget on what we think our production will be along with market pricing. And we basically just trend out the, the anticipated royalties. What you see here is we're budgeting $985,000 for a combination of royalties and interest income. And that is a little bit higher than last year. What's actually driving that to be higher though are higher interest rates at the moment that we, we know we will generate on this fund. So we do project that this fund will generate another $910,000 over the course of the 18-19 year, which would bring the ending fund balance to about $11.6 million. The debt service fund is used to account or for the taxes that we levy to, to pay the principal and interest on our bonded debt. And so we've already built into this particular budget what we think the principal and interest will be on the bonds that we will be bringing to you all to sell next week. And we've also based our budget on our estimate of property values. We levy a tax each year to pay just the principal and interest that is due in the upcoming fiscal year. And, and by law, that's, that's all we can levy. So we are, have not recommended any change in the tax rate, the debt service tax rate for next year. At the moment, using our conservative projections of property values and also being conservative on what we think the interest rate will be for the bond sale next week, this shows that we have a, just a very small deficit. I fully anticipate that, that our bond sale will actually have a slightly lesser interest rate attached to it than what we projected. And then our property values, we hope and anticipate based on previous years, will be higher than we used in the budget. So I don't anticipate that we would be dipping into this fund balance for this particular budget year. And again, we will adopt the tax rate in August when we get our certified values. So here's a, a look at that budget. Again, it shows a slight deficit of $122,000. But I think once our values are certified, and once we know what our interest rate is next week, we will not see a deficit. This is a fund, like all the funds, we, we come to the board in the spring and do an interim budget amendment. And so we adjust our expenditures and revenues at that time based on current conditions and current things that we know. And so I would anticipate that when we bring the mid-year or the interim budget amendment to you all next spring, that, that we would increase revenues and possibly decrease expenditures and, and not have that deficit. The construction fund is where we account for the proceeds from those bond sales and also our local construction funds and interest earnings on those funds. The proceeds of bond sales obviously are what we use for the projects that are identified in our bond programs. And so in this upcoming year, we have several major projects that will be under construction, including our Fine Arts Center, our athletics complex. The junior high track project is already started. It's well underway. And, and it should be sufficiently and significantly complete by the time we start football season this fall, but it does cross fiscal years. So there's some expense that we will incur in the 18-19 year for that, the, the track projects. And then also condition improvements. We have a number of schools in our Phase Four and Phase Five, portion of the bond program that will have their renovation work done in this upcoming year. In terms of the local construction fund that is part of the capital projects fund, we have several projects that will be underway in this upcoming year. One being a classroom addition at Jones, and then also the Workman Stadium improvements that are funded in part by, largely by contributions from the. from the NFL and the Gene and Jerry Jones Youth Foundation. That work is, is well underway. And again, it will cross fiscal years, uh, so we budgeted for it here. And then also the Turning Point Kitchen renovation. Uh, that project was funded through the 17-18 budget. The funds were coming out of the general fund, uh, and we've transferred them to the capital projects funds because that work is taking place this summer and again crosses fiscal years. Uh, we anticipate that that will be finished in early fall. Uh, we are doing that work because we combined, uh, the Turning Point Junior High and, uh, high school programs onto one campus and we needed to expand the kitchen. In addition to our construction projects, uh, we also have work taking place, uh, through the technology, fine arts and transportation, uh, portions of our budget. Uh, for technology, we will spend $19.1 million this upcoming year, uh, for a number of items, including, um, wireless enhancement, security cameras. Uh, we'll have network equipment replacements, network, uh, printers, PA system replacements, and, uh, document cameras and transformational learning grants, which have been a very popular part of our, our bond program. On fine arts, uh, we'll continue purchasing instruments and uniforms. In terms of uniforms, uh, what we have for this upcoming year are, uh, uniforms to expand the inventories of some of our schools as their programs grow. And then also perhaps replacing uniforms that have become torn or, uh, have some problem with them. Uh, on transportation, we will buy buses and white fleet vehicles. Uh, in, in terms of, uh, all of these areas, uh, the 18-19 year will, for the most part, wrap up all the planned purchases out of the, the 2014 bond program. There may be a few that linger into the fall next year, uh, but this should, uh, take care of most of, uh, of, uh, the, the planned purchases from the bond program. So in looking at that budget, um, what you see in the column entitled 2018-19 Preliminary Budget, you see a line that says surplus and deficit, and there's a very large amount there, there's a negative amount. All that simply means is we're accessing the bonds that we've already sold from this authorization. We sell bonds each year of the bond program. Uh, we've had four sales so far and we only have, uh, about a little less than $36 million of the $663 million left to actually issue. And we'll be coming to you all next week, uh, with an item on the agenda for that final bond sale. So we've sold bonds, we have them available to us, uh, as we start projects. Uh, and so, uh, we're simply with that negative amount, don't panic, that's simply that we're taking those dollars, uh, that we've already, those bonds we've already sold that are sitting in fund balance and we'll be spending them. So our expectation is that when we end, uh, next year, we'll have $922,737 in fund balance. And I want to be very clear, that includes the fine arts center and the athletics complex because we show the entire dollar amount of those projects as being expended here because we will issue purchase orders and contracts for those entire amounts this year. Those projects, those two in particular, uh, will not wrap up until the following summer, summer of 2020. So there will be expense brought forward, rolled forward, money that we, out of this budget that doesn't get spent this year that rolls into the following year. So, um, we do expect that all the projects that we plan to do, um, will be finished within the resources we have available here in this fund. Um, we also, there may be some smaller renovation projects that, uh, that, that, that run into the fall next year. And so again, all of those are taken care of with the dollars that you see budgeted for expense here. Again, as one more reminder, uh, we still have one more opportunity after this, so we'll come back next week. We'll have that hearing that we're required by law to have before we adopt a budget. Um, we can have any final conversations then if we need to come back after tonight's discussion. Uh, but then ultimately, um, it's our desire to have the board adopt that budget next week. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you for all the information. Let's see, Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Rush. Um, I, I know we're having a discussion here, um, on this wonderful topic of budget. Um, but there, there's, there's one quote that I want to say, and that is, um, that I just want us all to remember that the budget is not just a collection of just numbers, but it's also an expression of our values and our aspirations of what we want for this district. And, um, our example of what we heard this evening, I mean, we talked about the sustainability of the programs that we're building and how excited we see the students are and the teachers are and the staff and administration of all the new things that we're implementing in the district. Uh, my aspiration is that we're able to continue those programs for years to come in addition to the thought process that we already have of building on those programs. Um, and with that being said, we know that that's going to continue to take, uh, resources to do that. Um, Cindy, I was looking over the, the budget and, um, our preliminary budget for 2018-19, um, doing absolutely no raises, um, gives us a preliminary deficit of $29 million with a estimated fund balance of $162 million. Not quite the 200, almost 200 million that we had projected for 17-18. Um, also, on the slide for our fund balance and months of operating reserve, that same budget without any raises or any adjustments for healthcare, we're left at 3.67 months of operating reserve. Um, I must say for me personally, for the 12-plus years that I have been participating, um, in budget activities for the district, um, more than three months has always been a comfort level for me. Um, and since those 12 years, seen a huge decline in the amount of money that we are receiving from the state. So what's, what that is telling me is that we are having to continue our capacity to sustain the district while receiving less and less money from the state that we have to make up because we want to continue to run. And that's, yeah, so, um, with that said, uh, one other thing that I've learned from being married is that whenever you're discussing budget and money, you should pull all the emotions out. Because we need to just talk about the budget. Obviously, whatever you want to spend your money on, you're very passionate about. So I, I'm really hoping that we can have our thought process and our discussion with the lack of emotion on what we need to do for money. Very simple, if you spend more than you bring in, you're not going to survive. That's just a fact. Um, also, over the last 12 years of saying participating, uh, I have to say something that's started in the back of my mind, but is slowly coming forward and we can see the trend of that is what I call budget creep. And that is continuing to dip into what we call as a savings, continue to dip. We say we're just going to dip a little bit this year, it should be okay. But when you dip that little beer, that little bit, and then, what we might need if we can't get this done, um, if you dip that little bit for this year and you're dipping for something that you have to continue to sustain the next year's, then you're almost dipping twice, as my example. And then if you have to dip again the next year to do that, then it's like you're dipping four times as much. And, uh, for right now, we are not anticipating that we're going to be receiving any additional funds from the state. So, I, I'm saying all of that, um, to say that how we move forward with the budget, I think needs to be, um, very cautious of what it's going to look like several years from now, not just for this year while we can comfortably sit up here and still make payments and Cindy still have all of her hair and still love talking to us. But what it's going to look like several years from now from the decisions that we make year to year on these budgets. Um, I know we're not voting on the budget itself, but I, I would like to entertain a motion. Um, as far as teachers or as far as salaries across the board, I would like to just go ahead and make a motion, um, to approve a 2.25% raise, salary raise. Um, based on my calculations, that would take our deficit from the 36 million, which was worth 2%, to, if my numbers are correct, a deficit of $37,462,571. And that would increase, that would leave us a fund balance of about $156,215. And don't take notes of those dollars correct in case I didn't add them correctly, but that's my thought. But that's with a 2 point... Sure. So, what I did, Cindy, is you gave us our 2% at 7.491144. And so I took the 1% of 3.745572 and I just divided it by four, for quarters. And added that to the 7.491144. Is that correct?
That, that is very correct. Um, we've got, uh, we've run that number as, um, $8,427,538, I believe would be, uh, two and a quarter.
I got.
And, uh, and, and so I think that would leave our fund balance at a little over, um, uh, $154.3 million if I'm right, yeah.
You're right?
Yeah.
So, um, I, I would just like to entertain that motion for a 2.25% salary increase, which would be, um, 8.427537.
Okay. There's a motion by Ms. Mays for 2.25%.
For discussion sake, I would second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Mays, second by Mr. Hives, to consider 2.25%. Okay. Mrs. Walton?
Thank you, uh, President Rush. I have a couple of questions, um, and, and to verify. Um, I see in our packet we got tonight that the surplus in the national, natural gas fund is $910,000.
That would be our budgeted surplus for 18-19.
Right, for 18-19. Um, where would I look to find that same, um, interest on the fund balance?
The interest, uh, well, part of the revenue that you see in that summary slide is for interest. And let me get back there to that, I can...
Thank you.
Show you what that is. Um, it's, uh, 800, let's see here, I believe the, the royalties are, hang on here.
Royalties on the...
The royalties, uh, are $720,000 and the interest is $265,000 that we anticipate we will earn this year.
On the natural gas fund? Okay. On the general fund balance, what is, what's the same interest or whatever on that?
On general fund, let me set that up. Interest, I believe we have at, uh... It's on, uh, it's in your packet.
Thank you.
Page 17. And the investment income, uh, we are budgeting at 3.5 million.
Okay. I don't have a page...
That's in the large packet, uh, the preliminary.
Okay, page 17 in the first one. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm getting this together here. Appreciate your help. Okay.
And keep in mind that, um, the interest that we earn is largely on cash that we have out looking, which is largely our, um, fund balance.
Oh, well, explain where that's in.
It's, it's in the, the big budget, uh, packet, uh, that has, it says on the front, so it's covered, it says Arlington ISD Preliminary 18-19. June 12th, 2018.
I'm sorry, I'm just, it's, it's late and I just, okay. Where am I looking? Total revenue?
So she's on page... If you look, uh, if, if you're on that page 17 and you look down about, um, halfway, it's before, it's in that, uh, local and intermediate revenue section. Towards the bottom of that section, you'll see investment income. And this column, second from the right, $3.5 million.
All right, $3.5 million.
Okay. And, and so those proceeds are, uh, those, those interest earnings are generated largely by fund balance that we have, uh, that we're able to invest. And so there's significantly more fund balance in the general fund, uh, that we will be investing over the year than we have in the natural gas fund.
Right.
Why there's a, a difference there in those amounts. Um, I, I, you know, as I stated last week, um, with the 2.5% cost of living increase right now, I'm, I'm just not convinced that 2.24 is enough. Um, and I would like to, um, you know, talk about rolling the money that we're talking about using for insurance into the raise money so that, um, all of our employees would benefit. And I would really love anyone that could help me figure out some way to help the people at, uh, who make the least in our family of somehow, um, realize more, uh, resources for their insurance than what, what they are. Um, it worries me that 66% of our food services employees are not taking the insurance. And, you know, l- looking at the numbers on this sheet, uh, I pretty well deduct that that's because they can't afford it. So, uh, I'm looking for some help from the rest of y'all for how we correct, uh, or help correct. I don't, I don't think there's enough money to correct it, but how we can, you know, how we can help them maybe more than, uh, those employees that are at a higher level of salary. So, those are the two things I'm struggling with. I don't think 2.24, I think 2.5 is more what we need. And I think we need to look at somehow finding a way to give those, getting the least, uh, salary more help, uh, with their health insurance. So, maybe it will help a few more of them be able to, to afford it. So, thank you.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, so just to make sure we're clear, thank you, Dr. Rush. Uh, just to make sure we're clear, my motion is really just about raises right now. I didn't mention anything about insurance because hopefully that'll be another discussion. And if there's, however we choose to vote for if we do it, how we do it, that'll be separate and/or above whatever I'm proposing. Now, I just want to make sure that, that that part's clear. I, I don't have a motion right now for the health insurance, but I do want to go ahead and put out there my desire to do some type of a raise for our teachers.
Oops, sorry. Try this again. Go ahead. Oh, did it not work?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Ms. Mays. I, I do appreciate that. But, um, I also, uh, am struggling with how we give insurance, um, an, an increase in the, uh, insurance, uh, contribution to those who have insurance already and don't, and there's nothing there for 2,000 of our employees who don't have any insurance or have it with some other, some other way, uh, is saying. So I, I'm struggling with that and I, I see, um, adding whatever we have in the pot for insurance to salaries for everyone and, and finding some way to maybe make that a little bit more for our lowest, uh, uh, salaried employees and, um, not do a separate insurance stipend, uh, or increase to the contribution, not a stipend, excuse me, increase to the contribution. Uh, because that would give, if we did it in the salary, it would give all of our employees some, some, some help for their insurance. And they all need insurance, our whole family, we want all of our family to be, you know, taken care of. And it also would help if we do the insurance, you know, if we take that pot of money that maybe might be insurance... you know, if we take that pot of money that maybe might be insurance contribution and put it in salary, it helps, it helps everybody. It helps all eighty-five hundred of our employees. It also helps when we get to retirement, if that's in the salary, you know, that money helps them see a little bit more at the time they retire. Insurance contributions don't help with that. So, that's just kind of my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walton. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Rush. And just once again, I just want to reiterate, my motion is only talking about compensation. I'm not discussing, I didn't put anything or include anything for health insurance. That's a discussion that we can continue to have or, and maybe you make a motion after we vote on this one of how we want to do that. This is, my two point two five is a base. If you decide that you, that we all decide we want to do something with health insurance, and that means adding to the two point two five, that's that discussion. But I just want to make sure that you understand, I'm not excluding anything from the insurance. I'm just mainly focusing on wanting to have a vote on saying, I'd like to make a motion for a two point two five percent raise to start. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Choppa?
Ms. Powell, in, in respecting that, that Ms. Mays has limited her motion to just salary or, or raises in general right now, I do think that Ms. Walton's concerns and questions prompt a question on my part, because I do, I think, view the question of raises as somewhat intertwined with the issue of health insurance. And so I think something that would help me sort out my own thoughts is if, is the wellness plan offered, that the district offers, is it available to employees who are not on active care?
Yes, it's available to all employees.
Okay. Now, I know that the district provides a, a somewhat higher subsidy, for lack of a better term, at the moment, for health insurance for participants who are in the wellness plan. Can a employee who is not on active care but also participates in the wellness plan receive that subsidy?
We could do that as some sort of a stipend. There would have to, I, I, I think we'd have to really talk through the structure of what that would look like. Right now, we've set this up so it is, honestly, it's very, very easy to get the points that access the, the additional contribution towards health insurance. I, I think we'd have to have a lot of discussion around what that might look like.
But it's not something we currently do?
No, we do not.
Do you have any sense of how many employees who do not participate in health insurance do participate in the wellness plan?
I don't. I'm sure we can, we can run some queries to pull that data. We have a little over fifty-one, we have five thousand one hundred and sixty-three people who take health insurance. And we have two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine people who take, who are on the wellness plan. I can't tell you how many of those are not also taking our health insurance.
Okay, that, that's all the questions I have at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Mr. Hibs?
This may be simplistic, because I'm a simple guy. But you should be able to take the number for, for what we're paying with the wellness plan, right? We have that number and divide it by what the, the payment is, and that should come up with the number of individuals that we're actually paying that's on the wellness program. And then we can
We do.
just determine what the difference is.
Do we, I can, I don't know that we know, sitting here, what the total is that we pay for wellness. It's, it's part of a contracted services budget code, so I don't have that number here.
Okay. Of course, I, I seconded Ms. Mays' original motion. Just Robert's order of, as it goes there. There's always the opportunity for there to be asked to have amendment to the motion. So, make sure that it, it's clear that you have the opportunity to ask to amend the motion. So, you know, in our discussion, I just want to make sure that we, we all know how we're talking. So, you know, whereas Ms. Mays has made this motion and it is specific to raises, if somebody wanted to see if they wanted to add healthcare to it or go in a different direction, you can make that, ask to make that amendment. I think it's good that we have a discussion amongst ourselves, because to be honest with you, I'm just chiming in right now just to, to share that one point. But I want to hear where everybody's coming from. So, I'm going to sit back and listen for a minute and then come back around with any other additional questions that I have at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs. Mr. Haug?
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I've been doing these budgets a long time. This is my tenth budget I've done for this board. As Ms. Mays said, I think we all worked on budgets before we got elected to the board over here as the chair of the finance, or what do we used to call it? I think I was on it bef, I think I was on it before it was called Financial Futures. It was like
Citizens Budget Review.
Citizens Budget Review. I think that's when I was the spokesman for that. And so we've worked on those budgets. I've done ten budgets. I've also voted to RIF this district before. And if you don't know RIF, that's Reduction in Force. I voted with no raise before. And let me tell you, that's the worst night of my life. So if I'm a little sensitive and protective of the fund balance, there's history. Because I had to be able to thank previous boards for being very careful on a fund balance. Some of the uses we use for a fund balance in this district, because we have to remember that's there for one-time uses. It's not recurring cost. We built Adams Elementary, or was it Patrick?
Patrick.
We built Patrick Elementary when the district had a huge need on the east side for an elementary over there. We built an entire addition to Sam Houston High School. A small planet, it looked like, we built over there. We've now allocated a fine arts building, an athletic center, an auditorium, numerous land purchases of our fund balance, numerous other small, one-time expenses that we allocate out of the fund balance because we've protected the fund balance. So if you're going just on a fund balance and the way the budget and the way the state is treating us with revenue, from a fiscal sense, you say, where? Ms. Powell's really good on this budget. Average, over, under five percent, probably pretty fair of where she comes in and her staff. These guys are really good at what they do. This year, the, we're already at five percent deficit. Projection, before we even get into salaries or anything on that. On the same note, teachers expect a salary. We've set a precedent in this district for about two percent. It's usually where we roll, usually what we go through, what we find. Ms. Mays, I think your idea of two point two five is a good number. I think it gets us where we'd be. Do you say, I think, health insurance has to be part of total rewards compensation? When you talk about compensation, you can't talk about one versus the other. You have to talk about total rewards compensation. Every company in this country is pushing it as total rewards compensation. Companies are starting to disclose how much they pay on insurance, because for too long, they were paying thirteen thousand dollars a year and getting zero credit to their employees, because people don't understand. All they know is they go and they pay their twenty dollar. Well, now you're paying these super high deductibles, and people are getting mad. So you have to include what you're paying and where you're going through with that. Y'all know my, my mission is to fight TRS Active Care. I can't stop, I won't stop, it's my goal. Fiscally, if you just talk about it, it's better for us not to have people on our insurance. Right? I mean, we save three thousand something dollars a month, a year, from an employee not being on our insurance. Thank God I don't think about it just from a fiscal standpoint. Because insurance is not just a fiscal number. Insurance keeps our people in our schools. Insurance keeps them with subs. Insurance keeps them safe with their families. Insurance does so many different things. And it's terrible insurance. Like, let's be honest. It's terrible from what we're coming. So I think we've got to think about it from a total rewards compensation. And I will just let you know, I will, without a doubt, no matter what, be making a motion to at least include another hundred and twenty dollars towards our insurance to be added in. Because as the speaker said earlier, we're letting the state off the hook. I, I agree, we are letting the state off the hook. But we're also letting our employees down with insurance. Because I talked to the security guards, talked to one at our graduation the other night, and asked him the plain and simple question. I said, you know, he's a younger guy. Said, are you married? Said, don't make it personal, there's a reason I'm asking personal. I said, are you married? He said, yeah. Said, do you have kids? He said, yeah. I said, how old? Said, two boys, four and two. I said, you're in the same boat I am. Said, I got two girls, three and a half and one and a half. I said, so let me ask a question. You don't have to answer if you don't want to. I said, but there's a reason, because we're working on the budget. Said, do you have insurance with, with us? He said, well, my wife and the kids are under her plan. Said, so you're under a plan? He goes, well, no, I just don't have any insurance. I said, you don't elect any? I said, can't afford it? He goes, no, I can't afford it. I said, so you just don't do anything with it? He said, no, just try and stay healthy. So, the security guard. He said, well, if I get hurt? I said, workers' comp covers that. I said, but there's a whole other scenario of what happens. So when we start talking insurance and we start talking wellness, I like to think of everything from fiscal sense, because I'm probably not the most sensitive guy out there. You can ask my wife, she'll tell you that. But I don't think anyone's taking into account the benefit of a wellness plan. In this country right now, the discussion around mental health is through the roof. It's through the roof to our students, to our staff. The word suicide is becoming something people talk about in this district. We have an EAP program that helps when they get to that point. Wellness programs have been proven to help from the front side. Everyone thinks wellness, oh, it's all about losing weight, right? That's what your automatic thought is. Well, it's not. Wellness is about time management, productivity, mental health, family relationship. Financial wellness is a huge factor to help people understand on total wellness programs of what happens. So I'll definitely be making a motion. If you look at our insurance increase of what's happened, I think the bottom seven percent. I think adding it into the wellness program encourages people to be in that wellness program. It's a premium payback. It's probably the most popular way people are reimbursing employees across this country is premium payback. Why? I want you to enroll in the wellness program. If not, it means you're giving up three hundred and something dollars a year to do this. So I, I would, I always lean towards premium payback. Our wellness program, we asked very carefully when this started, is it hard? And it's not. It's a really simple wellness program. Then you get into the fact of it gives us control over those dollars. Because I've worn this board, we talk about getting out of TRS Active Care. And Ms. Powell and team have talked about this. We get out of TRS Active Care, the Lord has risen, right? That's how I'll feel when that occurs, because I'm, I'm still, I work hard, but I'm hesitant over this. We get out of TRS Active Care, we're able to actually provide what I like to call livable insurance to our employees. We're going to face some costs. We're going to face some costs on that. So what can happen? What can happen? Well, if we can reduce their premiums, and I can get their premiums the same rate they were, that wellness reimbursement sometimes that you have on there, premium payback, doesn't have to always be in play. You can look at that and say, we're doing this, let's add some extra incentives, some different incentives instead of premium payback to encourage the wellness program and enrollment. There's lots of different ways that a lot of H and B consultant, benefits consultants in the world can help you design plans to really be creative, to incentivize and be good for your employees. So Ms. Mays, I'll, I'll, you know, with the understanding that we're not going to go crazy on other costs or anything, I, I think a two point two five is above what our precedent's been. Fiscally, if I just thought about it, you don't vote for a raise. I mean, I hate to say it, but I also know we have to do this for our teachers, in my opinion, this year. Ms. Powell, let me ask a couple of questions. What unexpected costs do we have coming in nineteen twenty and beyond? What do you think's going to be popping up?
We have expected costs for opening the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex. The Athletics Complex is a buil, really both of them are buildings like we haven't had before. We're already taking steps to try to help us control our costs there. The big one being electricity supply contracts. We've already locked in pricing from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four at a very low rate. We may actually be coming back to you all even next week seeking some authority to, to explore the possibility of locking in pricing beyond that. And so we've already tried to take some steps towards controlling those costs. We try all the time to look for efficiencies.
Yeah.
And we've, we've shown how, you know, we've, we've consolidated several schools and we tightened some staffing on high schools and, and things that made sense where we had some opportunity. We'll continue to look for opportunities to control our costs. I, I can't say today what I think the, the unforeseen cost may be. We know we will continue to have inflation to contend with. We have no idea what the state's school finance system will look like in the future.
None.
And beyond this year, really. And so that's something that we have to guard against. But I'm not trying to even.
Yeah, no, that's fair. Ms. Powell, let me ask you, as I've, I'm a, I'm a policy wonk, and so I, I like, while I'm working during the day sometimes in between meetings with clients, I watch every Senate and House meeting. There was lots of discussion from a superintendent yesterday on the Senate Select Committee on School, on Senate Select Committee on School Safety, where it came up. And they were talking about some concerns over special ed funding from the Fed going away. So they have a hu, huge increase coming to them in future years on special ed funding. Do we think that's something that could be coming up in future years?
I haven't heard that specifically on special ed. This year, there was a risk that we might lose Title II funding. And at the end of the day, when the federal budget passed, that money was in there. And we received a, a good bit of funds and have about twenty instructional specialists that are paid out of that funding. If any federal funding goes away and we have people attached to it.
That's right.
Then, you know, we'll have to see how we absorb them.
We either try to absorb it or they lose those positions, correct?
Correct.
Because those, if they're under a federal position, they know this is based on federal funding.
They do. And those are what we would consider very valuable and
Right.
essential personnel. So to try to make, you know, that, that would be a difficult cost for us to try to roll into the General Operating Fund.
Title twenty-one or Century Twenty-One Grants, when we lost that from the Fed for after-school care, was a big loss for us. Something that we couldn't fund that, you know, something of United Way's worked for many years about is to say, what about after-school time? What are our kids doing? Because we get them most of the day, but then they go home and what's happening to them? Or they don't have someplace to go right after school. When Century Twenty-One Grants went away, and that federal funding. And if you all don't think federal funding's going to start dwindling more and more, watch, I won't say which news station on cable news, because that'll give away, but you can watch one of them, whichever one you choose, and they'll all give you the same opinions on that. Ms. Powell, would it be unheard of to think we have unexpected costs of some security increases coming up in the next two years, probably?
We, like we do. We, you know, we'll, we'll continue to look at opportunities in terms of enhancing infrastructure and, and what we can do through bond programs for that. But, you know, we're in year four of a five-year bond program now. And so anything beyond what we've already planned for would either have to come out of the General Operating Fund or the future bond program.
I mean, I, I lean almost to saying, boy, if we're not earmarking money towards security costs, we're not budgetarily doing our jobs. Could I easily sit there and say, we need to allocate automatically five hundred thousand right now towards that? Yeah. You could easily, and I would be okay with that. Luckily for us, we put a lot of money into security in the twenty fourteen bond. We put a ton, we put a bunch. And, and so we're a little ahead of the game with some of the other districts because of the money we allocated in twenty fourteen. I think we could easily put that. Ms. Walton, you asked the question on how, help on make, how do we help on making the least? You can do a variable-based, which we've done. We actually fund more now for our employees who make less for the insurance to come up. Unfortunately, until we're out of TRS Active Care, I don't think you're going to be able to fund it completely to get them incentivized. If you look at our insurance plan and across the state especially, their numbers, people are walking with their, talking with their feet. They're not electing, they're not choosing their insurance. They're not electing, they're not choosing their insurance, and they're not coming into those. So, with our insurance right now, we actually fund more for our lower-paid employees from where that comes in currently. So, there is a differential between the two. If you look at the one... Yeah, if you'll go to page four, in our pack, District Health Insurance Contributions. You see, we give admin support, tech aides, auxiliary employees, three thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Professional employees, three thousand sixty dollars to try and help with some of that coverage of insurance. I think that was something we changed two years ago, if I remember correctly. Because our lower-paid employees are having the hardest time. And then we start talking about what insurance does. From a teacher's standpoint, they don't have a lot of choice, right? They don't. They're gonna go to another district, they're either gonna get it with their spouse. But when you start talking security, when you start talking maintenance, you start talking professional offices, do our HR generalists have to work here? Nope. I can name a, I can name three security guards we've lost to better insurance that have been in those companies. I know our maintenance department, talking with our head of maintenance, has a hard time with recruitment and retention when they show the insurance. Any one of us, in this day and age, when you get recruited by another company, one of the main questions they ask is, well, let me see the insurance plan. So, just throwing money at a salary, I think, is disingenuous for what the money's there for. We're telling you to use it for insurance. We want you to use it for insurance, because insurance is not just about a cost. It's not just about money. It's about something we have that we think's good for the employee, which in turn makes you a better employee, which in turn is better for our students. I'll stop with that.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Ms. Walton?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Dr. Rush. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Hogg. We want our people to be well, we want them to have insurance, we want the security guard to be protected, that you mentioned, that we, we met at the graduation. But how do we help that security guard? By, I mean, the fact he doesn't have our insurance makes him ineligible for the wellness plan? Or, well, he can do the wellness plan, but for the added contribution to his, his insurance? How, you know, how do we help those tw- two thousand employees? I'm, I'm still waiting for an answer, you know? Help? How do we?
Well, first step is you get out of TRS Active Care.
Well, but that's not, I mean, I'm talking about help them now. You know, insurance is something you need all the time, not three years down the road, or whatever. Or even after January, if we're lucky enough to see something happen in the legislature that meets in nineteen nine, twenty nineteen. Here and now, how do we help those two thousand employees? And besides that, how do we help those that are down here at the lowest? I, I think the idea of upping it, you know, more for those, like we've done in the past, upping the contribution, might help them some, but those are the people who aren't taking the insurance. So, it's kind of, we're just, we're throwing money at a problem, but it's not getting to where the problem is. So, help? Has anybody got an idea?
Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank Dr. Rush. Uh, you can't fix it, Ms. Walton. How much are you gonna throw at it? You gotta draw a line, but any incremental help can help. There's employees that'll help. There's a lot that'll help. And what you're not taking into account is, yes, I'd love to give it to all of our employees also. How do you wanna do it? You could maybe do some type of HRA reimbursement program, where then you're paying for HR management. They're coming back, they're doing a reimbursement, there's some, there's some...
That's not gonna help these service people.
You can do it for all. You can do it for all. There's some different ways. It'd be some tough on some, some rules around how you handle a plan of how you do that. But in incremental, you don't know how many are not choosing, how many another extra hundred dollars helps them get to that type of plan. And that's great. We're never gonna be able to help them all. But who I can help is all the employees that have our insurance, and it's at unlivable wages. When we testified, and just not doing anything's not a solution. I'm sorry, it just doesn't work. Scott Kell and myself testified for the House Pensions Committee. A starting, let's just do teacher. Starting teacher makes fifty-two-five. A new teacher subscribing to TRS Family Plan paid thirteen, and this is last year, it's not even the increases, thirteen-six-six-eight over twelve months for a family plan on the high deductible. And all I kinda look at is the high deductible. It's what I think is there, different plans are there, but you gotta kinda look at one plan and go with that. So, over a year, they pay thirteen-six-six-eight, twenty-six percent of their gross annual income. Let's say they have to have care. My wife gets mad every time we're on a high deductible plan. We have to cash flow all of it on the front. You have a fifty-five-hundred-dollar deductible. So, now they're at nineteen thousand one sixty-eight, just hitting their deductible, thirty-seven percent. So, then with that, let's just say something goes wrong. If something goes wrong, that's thirteen-six-six-eight, plus the max out-of-pocket of thirteen-three for a family, twenty-six-nine-six-eight. If you calculate that out, that's just over fifty percent. Now, what happens to our lower-pays? You know? So, you can't just fix it. It's not just throwing money at a problem. It's putting money there to help those from what we possibly can. To fully fix it, you gotta fund. You gotta get it down to little wages. TRS barely keeps it above Obamacare or the Affordable Care Act rate of affordability, which is only judged on the employee and the high deductible plan, is the only thing they have to judge it on. So, they do premium reimbursements, they do premium adjustments to make sure they're still under affordable rates on there. So, Ms. Walton, to answer that, you can look at adjusting more on the lower rates. You can adjust, but I think it's something affecting everyone, because unfortunately, some of our lower-paid employees aren't electing it. Until we get to that. I get it, Ms. Walton. But those that are taking it by doing nothing, you're giving an even bigger sign to them that we're not doing anything. And you have to do something for the insurance to be able to help these employees.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the table for two point two-five. I have a couple of lights. Is this discussion specific to this motion? Or I would like to call the vote?
Yes, sir.
To call the vote? Oh, to yours? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Mays.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. So, back to my motion. I'd like to amend it. Can I do that?
Depends on what it is.
Okay. My permission of my second, may I please amend my motion?
Yes.
Thank you. So, once again, for, for the...
I gotta hear what it is, and then I tell.
Well, that's not fair. I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
This is Robert's Rules of Order, not household rules.
So, with the discussion, to your question, Polly, no. We, we, the way we fix it is to try to continue to advocate and make sure that our legislatures are where as we're all doing, including you. And I know we're gonna all continue to do that very hard. But my motion, original motion, was to approve a two point two-five percent salary. And I'd like to amend that to say, include a two point two-five percent salary, which should help those who are not on the insurance, and add a hundred and twenty dollars to our compensation package towards the wellness, which is helpful to those who are on insurance to help decrease their yearly premiums.
All right. Mr. Hibbs?
And I will second that.
Yes, ma'am.
The amendment is to add a hundred and twenty dollars on health insurance, as discussed and presented by Ms. Powell, to the two point two-five percent salary increase. All right. And the, the wellness, as Ms. Powell presented. And Ms. Walton?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Does that include tying it to the wellness plan to get it? Yes.
Okay. All right, so there's an amended motion, then, two point two-five percent and a hundred and twenty dollars as designated. On the amendment, which is the hundred and twenty. Thank you, thank you.
Can I speak to the amendment?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I can't see voting for this, because I don't think a hundred and twenty is going to help that much to incentivize people. I think Mr. Hogg or someone said that, to, you know, take part in the wellness plan. And if we're tying this to the wellness plan, I would really like to, I mean, if we're gonna have to do this, this way, then it needs to be two hundred and forty dollars to really be an incentive for them to do the wellness plan. So, I would encourage you to vote no.
All right. Mr. Choppa?
I have a point of inquiry. What, is it parliamentary, parliamentarily proper to amend an amendment?
You can't, as long as you're not changing the intent of the amendment, which if you change the number, you would be changing the intent. But if you were taking out thirty-five more dollars for parking, as an example, then it wouldn't change the intent of the amendment.
So, if I, if I want to change one of the numbers, then it would not be in order.
It would not be in order, you have to vote down.
That's correct.
That part of the motion.
Okay. Well, in that case, I don't have a motion to amend the amendment. Instead, I guess I would be in the position of joining Ms. Walton and requesting that this amendment not be voted upon, because I, I agree with Ms. Mays that a two point two-five percent raise, I think, is where I'm at, where I'm comfortable right now. But I, I do think we can do more on the health insurance front. I would be, I think, more comfortable with doubling the hundred and twenty dollars to two hundred and forty dollars a year. I don't think that that would materially increase the amount of, of funds that we would be taking from fund balance. I am comfortable tying it to the wellness initiative, because although I know some employees have expressed concerns with that, I think it's in the long-term interest of the district and its budget. I think one day, we will succeed in getting off TRS Active Care. And I think having a very healthy wellness program at that time will lead to premium decreases for our employees. But what, especially just coming off an election, and election puts you in touch with lots of people, lots of people in touch with you. And something that we heard over and over again at, at many of the candidate forums that we went to, is that our teachers are particularly hurting if they're on the health insurance plan. And recognizing that we do already provide competitive salaries in this area, that they'll continue to be competitive with a two point two-five percent raise, I think there's a point two-five percent increase that Ms. Mays has proposed that I appreciate very much, because it recognizes that costs are increasing for our employees across the board. And that there are comparable districts in this area who have gone with a two percent increase. We could do a two percent increase and still be competitive. So, another quarter on top of that, I think, is a, is a very good sign of helping our, you know, putting out a hand to help our employees and recognizing the position they're in. And I also think that increasing a two hundred and forty dollars a year on the health insurance front and tying it to the wellness plan actually does have the potential to treat our employees equally. I know this, you know, Mr. Hogg's example of a security guard defies this example, this thought, just a little bit. But I think most of our employees who are not on our health insurance plan, it's because they can get cheaper healthcare somewhere else. Maybe it's through a spouse, or they have some alternative arrangement. By providing an increase in the subsidy, we're helping employees who are stuck with our plan, which is significantly worse off than many other plans that are provided by private employers. And so, I think that it, it levels the playing field to some extent for our employees who have to go with TRS Active Care and put them on an equal footing to their peers who do have another, less expensive healthcare option. And so, I know that this is technically complex. But on this particular motion to, this particular vote to amend the motion, I would ask that it be voted down. And then I, if so, I would then propose a motion to increase the healthcare subsidy to two hundred and forty dollars a year.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Hit your thing again, John, sorry. Getting there. Go ahead, Mr. Hibbs.
Okay. I feel like I'm, I'm talking parliamentarian tonight, because I, as far as the questions go. My understanding, tell me if I'm wrong here, we're voting on the amendment to the original motion, okay?
Correct.
If, if we still have to pass the original after this point, right?
Yes.
So, we pass this one, can the other one not be amended then? If it, if it should pass?
It cannot be amended to change, if, if you pass this amendment, then it becomes the entire motion.
Right.
You cannot then amend to change the numbers within. If you want to change the numbers within, you have to vote down the amendment and then make a new motion to amend with a new number.
Okay.
Yeah, they can withdraw their motion.
They're not supposed to, under Robert's rules.
Okay. But, Robert, but I, I do, I, I'm going to defer to my colleague, Ms. Mays, because I seconded your amendment, okay? So, I seconded your amendment. I'm going to defer to you, if you would like to rescind, right? Withdraw?
You want to vote to defeat, you want to encourage people to vote against the amendment, so that a new amendment can be made.
All right. Mr. Hogg, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Rush.
I require to follow Robert's rules.
Yeah.
I understand.
We can, we can, you can fix your motion if you want. We'll fix it, we got it. We're gonna make the rules up here, somewhat. Right? Right, lawyer?
Yes.
So, so let me say this. I worry two forty is just a number pulled out of the hat, right? We're pulling a number out of a hat. So, I have two options that I would tell the board to think about. One option is ask Mr. Kell to look at a survey, start doing some actuarial accounts, and say, what do we think drives some of that number of where that number needs to be? What drives some of our insurance, some of those? He can do that, and we can come back and do a budget amendment at any time for this plan. Now, we do enrollment, we do it with his base numbers, but no employee in the wellness program's gonna get mad if we contribute more money to that later on. Agreed, Ms. Powell? Right. If you're looking for a number tonight, I, I'm not a fan of pulling numbers out of a hat. And I'm afraid two forty is that. I would tell you to go with one ninety-two. And just to make it easy, two hundred, okay? I know it's a little less, and y'all know all fight for insurance, but I think you have to base it on that individual health insurance premium increase. That is a historical way to develop your increase. So, you take it to, just to make it easier for Ms. Powell and team, do you agree doing it one ninety-two versus two hundred? Or would you rather just do, say, so that way, we can say from the individual HD1, no increase on the plan? It's one ninety-two a year premium increase. So, you've got one twenty a year is what you have on the table right now as a motion. So, I would tell you to make the insurance premium to one ninety-two, which is the match of the HD1 individual plan, which is what is judged on in Affordable Care Act, all the different pieces of that, to be able to assist on that. That goes in, it's not as much help for spouse, family, and children, but it's still an additional that helps based on that face. And then it's not just number choosing out, it's our staff and, and team being able to say, we went up and, and matched the increase on that one number right there. That's what I would propose to you, Ms. Mays, and Mr. Hogg, with y'all's motion to consider. That's what I would propose to you, Ms. Mays, Mr. Hibbs, y'all's motion to consider. Otherwise, I would, I would actually tell you, I'm okay, comfortable voting on the increase we have. If you want to adjust it to that 192, I'd be willing, or 192 or even 200, I'd be willing to. We got it as well, we'll figure out through this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hogg, Mrs. Mays.
Say you.
I say "er." Okay, so for Robert's Rules of Order, I ask that everybody please vote my original 120 amendment down. I'm ready to vote.
Seeing no further lights indicating discussion, please vote.
Oh, wait.
No.
Oh, no.
Okay, amendment fails, we're back to the original motion of 2.25.
Okay, so if I-
Yours failed, so somebody else has made it.
No, I still have my first one.
That's right.
Right. So am I, I'm still amending my original? Okay. So I would like to make the motion to approve the 2.25% raise and to add $240 to be applied towards the insurance through wellness. I'm going 240. I didn't understand it.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second.
Okay, there's a motion for 2.25 and 240 contribution to the wellness. Is there discussion, Mr. Chapa, go ahead?
Ms. Mays, you have the floor. I would speak in favor of the 240 and I understand Mr. Hogg's sentiment of trying to tie this to something. But, you know, I think that the 120 number was also somewhat just of a, you know, we think that this is something that might get some meaningful engagement to get people on board. And I think that even though it's an imprecise number, and I understand the 192 is nice and neat and it closes that gap for the HD1 plan. But I think, you know, given what's going on with health insurance, I think we don't, not just need to meet the gap from this last year. I think we need to, and we will never close the gap. But I think it is, to the extent that we can go beyond that, I think our employees in that situation will appreciate it. And it's doable, and so that's the number that I'd like to stick with.
Okay. Any other lights? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Chapa? Motion passes unanimously. That was an emotion. All right.
You now have a motion for 225 plus 240.
All right. So there's a, the 240 is included in the original motion of the 2.25%. Is there discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes 100% unanimous. We'll have to fix that. Very good. All right. So then for, for next week then, Ms. Powell, you've got the vote, 2.25% and then the 240. Do you have any questions or clarifications to work out projections or numbers?
No, I think we did a quick calculation and so that would make the deficit 38,701,692, which would bring fund balance to 153,103,844, which is right at three and a half months of operating expense.
3.5?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that's realizing, as you have to put in the budget, that maximum of the 240, which is 1.22.
Yes.
Which-
And on the months of operating expense, it may be 3.3, 3.4. I think that we calculated this on the total, not on assigned. Yeah. Yeah, so it'd be just a tick less.
Yeah. Okay, very good. All right. You have a-
This is on the overall budget.
Go ahead, Mr. Hibbs.
Okay. So on the overall budget, we've, we've put aside at this point, or we voted to approve the new positions. We've now voted to approve a salary increase in healthcare. Is there a vote that we need to take on anything for food services that we, that we had seen tonight?
The raise in the health insurance applies to all of them.
Or do we need to vote for that one separately?
No.
Okay, so that's inclusive, right? So at this point, we vote on final budget once we can do it with the, with the tax rate too, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to leave anything sitting on the table.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. All right. So that concludes our discussion action. Now we're at open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards, so we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rush. I'd just like to thank all the staff and students and parents that were involved in graduation this past weekend for outstanding work and an outstanding demonstration of AISD success. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any trustees that have reports? Go ahead, Mr. Hogg. Oh, I swear I did. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just one thing. On behalf of the Governance Committee, we have officially this week completed all, meeting with all of our legislators from our local delegation. How do I just say interesting meetings with all of them? But I will say they were all very much appreciative. We were the only district that has actually met with them so far. So I will be reaching out to my colleagues from other districts because unfortunately too often, not enough school board members meet with local delegations. We, people sit here and complain about Austin, what happens if they don't meet with them? I think the one we had yesterday, they were more surprised that trustees go to each one of these meetings. No offense to you, Dr. Cavassos, but I think some of the legislators are tired of seeing superintendents. So to my colleagues, I just warn you, we'll be calling on you during the legislative session many a times. And to anyone in the audience, we're going to be calling on you on the legislative session to be assisting any way possible. But we, I commend my team and everyone, all the staff, especially Ms. Powell, for all the hard work to meet with all the legislators. It's not an easy piece. Something we did different this year is we made them all actually be in our schools. What a crazy concept. How about you actually see our students instead of these blind faces that you're voting on? Let them see what a campus had. I had one yesterday, he tripped on a pothole and almost broke his ankle and I said, well, if you fund us more, we could fix those things. But that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and thank you to the entire Governance Committee and for that work. It's, it's necessary steps, albeit maybe steps in the right direction. Although I don't know about your, your positive or questionable comments of like that. Maybe two steps back, I don't know. Ms. Fowler, please.
Yes, thank you, President Rush. On May 20th, Mrs. Mays and I attended First Methodist Church of Arlington for their 140-year celebration. We presented a proclamation to them and on that proclamation, it said how proud we were that of their church members, former and present, 40 members have had schools and/or buildings named after them that attended that church. So they were pretty proud of that and so were we. And they handed us a beautiful framed picture that had the walking path of their church as well as the 40 member names on there. So I presented that to Dr. Cavassos last week and it was a beautiful occasion and they were thrilled that we were there. But they really knew how to celebrate. They had their hallways filled with activities, a beautiful lunch. So we were very pleased that they'd invited us to be there. And then two weeks ago, I had the pleasure of visiting Seguin High School. I met with Principal Ray Borden and AP Billy Lenson and head football coach Joe Gordon. And I was very impressed with what I saw at Seguin High School. The students were very well-mannered. I was even in the hallways during passing period. There was no shoving or horse playing, they were polite, they spoke, they nodded. I was just very impressed with that school and everything that they're doing there. Their facilities were clean and beautiful, security officers where they needed to be. But I got a very warm welcome there and I was just very impressed with everything I saw at Seguin High School. And then I am also very excited. I've been meeting with Grace McDermott, who's president of the Asian American Chamber of Commerce. And just today, she sent a letter to Dr. Cavassos and she is bringing to Arlington what they're calling the Dragon Boat Festival. And this is something that is huge all over Asia. And she has arranged for dragon boat races to come to Arlington. And I am thrilled that she has asked me to be the chair of her advisory committee. So we're getting ready to start working on that and it's going to be on September 29th. And I think it is gonna really be a big deal. But the really important part of this is they are titling this a Race for Education. And it is gonna be tremendous, bringing in the community and sharing the value of education. She's anticipating booths and organizations are going to hold it at Veridian, out there on those beautiful lakes at Veridian. So they're excited about that. But the boats are coming out of Florida, they're going to be looking for teams to race these boats. And then hopefully, and it's gonna be free to the public and there'll be all kinds of activities going on. We met with Aaron Peralis this morning and he is challenging that the Board of Trustees be in one of these dragon boats racing on Veridian Lake. So that is a challenge that he has put forward to us. Challenge accepted.
I would say challenge accepted in spirit. The reality is, we're going to be in Austin at the TASB convention on that day.
What?
So I'm just letting you know, and we have a legitimate opt-out.
Oh, you're gonna have to tell Grace. I'm not telling Grace McDermott that. You're gonna have to tell her. But I think it's gonna be a tremendous event for Arlington, all these dragon boats and teams racing. But I love the fact that she's doing it all for a Race for Education. I love that the most.
Well, thank you. That's, that is, that is great stuff, really is.
I have pictures.
Oh, of a dragon boat.
Pictures of the dragon boats.
Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I got kind of distracted by dragon boats. I just, I just want to thank Mrs. Powell, I guess she's back, and Booyahog especially for organizing the visits with our legislators. I think it was very worthwhile and all of my fellow board members who went to any of them. And I think it's, I think it'll, I think it'll pay off in the long run. It was a lot of work and it was well-organized. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin back there for organizing this. And I will always have the picture in my mind of Representative Toni Tenderhold eating breakfast at Arlington High School. Great picture.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Rush. I just wanted to let everybody know and invite everyone to celebrate tomorrow as Judy Thomas Day in the city of Arlington. Ms. Thomas was a teacher of mine at Sam Houston High School and has a long history of involvement at Sam Houston. She was a member of the charter class of Sam Houston High School, graduated in 1965. I think, I hope it's okay I said that, Ms. Thomas. And then taught at Sam Houston High School for 39 years. And she didn't stay idle in her retirement. She stepped up and helped revitalize the Sam Houston Alumni Association, which has been just going all out for students at Sam for the past several years. She's had a hand in raising over $50,000 in scholarships, some grants from the, from nonprofits, including the Texas Rangers Foundation. And so tonight, the Arlington City Council recognized her for her contributions to the community by declaring tomorrow as Judy Thomas Day in Arlington. And very proud of Ms. Thomas and just want to say thank you to her.
That's excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hibbs?
Okay, you guys are gonna hear this over and over again to our finance department. Thank you for bringing us a well-prepared finance book, budget booklet. To be honest with you, tonight, we got here and I think we had seven different opinions of where we were going to go with, on our budget with both salaries and healthcare. I've gotta tell you, it's a remarkable team that 10 minutes before we even walked out here, I don't think we had an idea. We were thinking that it was even going to carry over until, until the next meeting. So I will tell you that I am, I've never been prouder of this board and the ability for all of us to work together and find something that's in the best interests of our, of our employees. So with that, I just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. And you stole what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
But I think it's duly noted. I, I am, as, as the president of this board, I, it just makes me very proud that we're able to come to a consensus with our, our, our staff, ultimately the children in mind. I think that was very well demonstrated here tonight, the care and concern. And it's, it's not always easy. But thank you guys very much for your, your work and your comments, your respectful tone. That's what it's all about. Thank you very much. On a different note, I would like to let everybody know some more student opportunity tomorrow. Of course, I think you all know that I'm involved in the International Folk Art Market, which is coming this week. Thursday nights, the VIP shopping experience, and then Friday, Saturday is the event. In anticipation of that, there's many artists, artisans from around the globe that are already here. And tomorrow is a cultural exchange opportunity over at UTA where a number of our AISD students are going to be participating with those artisans from around the country. And they're going to see demonstrations from those artisans as well as maybe some UTA glass blowing as well. But they're going to be able to see that, learn, interact with these folks from around the, around the globe. So it's really, really a neat opportunity. Additionally, added this year is a passport program for all children. And I know that there's a number of AISD children that will be participating. But I encourage you to spread that word, that's actually occurring on Saturday is the Family Day. And children will get to go through a passport program. If you're familiar with Epcot and Disney World, where they run around with passports and get stamps, stickers, that kind of thing. It's a similar type of thing where they're learning about the different cultures and artisans from around the globe. So it's kind of an exciting thing, an opportunity for our students in AISD. So I just wanted to let everybody know that and put in that plug to come on out to the green at College Park. It's gonna be a great time. So with that, we are not, well, I should say, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider? Oh, I just rejected you. Oh, my.
Make me yell. No, President Rush.
Thank you. We will not be going into closed session, this meeting is adjourned.